Everyone to the special meeting of the San Rafael City Council, Monday, September 19th. I will request that the city clerk calls the roll.
Councilmember Bushy.
Present.
Councilmember Hill.
Present.
Vice Mayor Kurtz.
Present.
Councilmember Yaren Gladi.
Present.
Mayor Kate.
Present, all five of us, present and accounted for. As this is a special meeting, we don't have the usual public open time that we'll have at 7:00 P. M. Members of the public, of course, are welcome to address us on any item that's on the agenda at the appropriate time. With that, I will turn it to the city clerk, who will share how folks can participate.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. This meeting tonight is being recorded and streamed live to YouTube, and members of the public can provide public comment by phone by calling 669-900-9128, using the meeting ID 89926359885 pound and pressing star nine to raise your hand for comment, or you can comment and watch directly through Zoom using the link on the agenda and use the raise hand feature through Zoom. If experiencing any technical difficulties, you can email us at city.clerk@cityofcenterfell.org and displayed on the podium and the projector is a two-minute timer to help you stay within the two-minute timeframe. You're invited, though not required, to introduce yourself and say what part of Centerfell you reside in, or if you're from outside of the area. We're offering closed captioning for this evening's meeting on Zoom. You can select the live transcript button on Zoom to enable this feature. Thank you.
Thank you. Our first agenda item is the grand jury report, Affordable Housing, Time for Collaboration in Marin. So with that, I will turn it over to staff. I see Alexis here.
Great.
Yeah, no worries. We know that we've found that you see it, sometimes we don't, so we'll wait till it gets up.
I think I selected it.
There we go.
Yeah, please do. Thank you.
Beautiful. There we go.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Kate, city council members, members of the public. My name is Alexis Kaptanian, Housing Analyst in the Community Development Department, and tonight I'm presenting the city's proposed response to the Marin County Civil Grand Jury's recent report on affordable housing. Made up of Marin County citizens, the Civil Grand Jury is an independent investigative body that monitors the performance of local government and makes recommendations to save taxpayer dollars and improve services. On June 24th, the 2021-22 Marin County Civil Grand Jury released a report entitled Affordable Housing, Time for Collaboration in Marin. The report addresses the shortage of affordable housing in Marin and offers a suggested solution, facilitating the development of more affordable and workforce housing through a coordinated regional approach. The grand jury has requested that the city of San Rafael review and respond to the 10 findings and one suggested recommendation listed in the report, and the city is required to submit a written response by September 22nd. Staff has drafted a response that aligns substantially with other Marin jurisdictions. The proposed response agrees with nine of the 10 findings put forward by the grand jury and partially disagrees with the finding numbered F8 on the grounds that all affordable housing developments, regardless of size, require subsidies to be financially feasible, not only large developments as the finding suggests. The grand jury's singular recommendation is that no later than December 31st, 2022, the Marin County Board of Supervisors and Marin City and Town Councils should jointly create a regional authority or empower an existing authority such as the Transportation Authority of Marin to coordinate affordable and workforce housing policy on a county-wide basis. While the city agrees that more collaboration on housing policy and funding would be beneficial, forming a joint powers agreement would take a significant investment of time, funding, and energy that would likely impair current housing efforts. And furthermore, the timeline proposed is not realistic, given that San Rafael and other jurisdictions are striving to meet state deadlines to submit housing elements in early 2023. San Rafael collaborates and coordinates housing programs with Marin County and other towns and cities in a number of areas, including through a monthly countywide housing working group meeting of planning directors and staff. Staff's proposed response declines to implement the grand jury's recommendation and outlines other ways that the city can build on existing collaboration across jurisdictions, including one, committing to interjurisdictional collaboration in the 2023-2031 housing element; two, collaborating on the implementation of certain housing element programs, especially those related to affirmatively furthering fair housing and tenant protections. So this could include conducting shared outreach and community engagement and informing model ordinances prepared by the county; three, developing a deeper and more formalized collaboration on the housing element update in the future, such as through shared housing element components or a toolkit from which jurisdictions can select policies and programs. The jurisdictions can also consider a subregional approach to meeting the region's housing allocation and the hiring of shared consultants to conserve resources and increase consistency; and four, exploring ways to collaborate more effectively on shared funding for affordable housing. So this could include establishing inclusionary housing fees that are consistent across the county, establishing a regional housing trust fund, and supporting the Bay Area Housing Finance Authority's fundraising efforts. So while staff does not recommend forming a regional authority at this time, we are committed to advancing a culture of interjurisdictional collaboration to address housing needs. Staff recommends that city council adopt the resolution approving and authorizing the mayor to execute the proposed response to the Marin County Civil Grand Jury Report, and with that, I'll hand it back to you, Mayor Kate.
Thank you, Alexis. Questions before we deliberate? Vice Mayor, any questions?
No questions.
Councilmember Hill?
No questions.
Councilwoman Bushy, go ahead.
I do have questions. I absolutely agree with your conclusions, but as I focus on your response to F8, I'm wondering why the definition of affordable housing is just limited to subsidized housing. We often talk about, for example, affordable by design plans that are typically smaller units that are priced lower, and then they don't require subsidies, and so then the private sector can build them. We often call ADUs. One of the rationale supporting ADUs is that they tend to be more affordable. And a rationale supporting our rent control ordinances for the mobile home parks is that this is unsubsidized but affordable housing. So I'm just, I'm wondering why the lens is so narrow in your definition.
So I think that that's a great point. I think we could adjust our response to also point that out in our response. I think that we were thinking about that the economies of scale, when you have a larger affordable housing development, can actually lend itself to making it easier to build, and the reverse was sort of put forward in the grand jury report. So I think we wanted to kind of make a distinction, but I think your point is well-taken and could be incorporated into our response.
I think actually there is much more potential for the market and the private sector to provide lower-cost housing that would be affordable and particularly workforce-type housing than there is for us to come up with enough subsidies to provide a significant amount of subsidized housing, having been struggling with this issue for years now. I know that the numbers are in the private sector, not in the subsidized sector. There just isn't enough dollars to go around, but thank you.
Thank you. Director Judasee, did you want to add to that?
I was going to add that I think that it's been covered quite well. I'm happy to answer any follow-up questions you have.
Okay. Thank you. No questions? No. Okay. I just have one question, and it's more out of curiosity. I know you had talked about the Marin Cities in the staff response, and how does the county of Marin play into this cross-jurisdictional work, being that they have an entire department that works on housing?
Yeah, I think it's a great question, and we did meet with the county and other jurisdictions in developing this response. And so I think that the, this, the county put forward some of what they wanted to do, and then we adapted that to what would work for us. But I think some of what the county put forward as things that they wanted to contribute, for instance, were the development of the model ordinances we mentioned. I think the city, like San Rafael and other cities, would be informing the development, but the county is really, you know, would be taking the lead on developing that model ordinance for, like I said, housing element program implementation, and then getting that out to the cities and to be able to adapt. So I think in that way, we were looking at how, you know, how can we leverage their larger team, and so that when it gets to the cities, it's not as heavy of a lift, if that makes sense.
Right, so that speaks to the technical expertise that they can bring. I'm curious, I know the grand jury report had suggested TAM, the Transportation Authority of Marin, had it been discussed in your conversations with the county that they possibly provide an umbrella, I'm not gonna say organization, structure for this cross-jurisdictional work?
So I think they are interested in doing that, and I think that they have started to try and hold some of those meetings more informally. I think the JPA that was recommended is like, you know, a very formalized response, and I think in the year that I've been here, I've seen a more organic development of collaboration that's developing with the county and other cities, and I think the county is taking a leadership role in that. I wonder, Ally, you want to add anything?
I mean, you can get where I'm going with this, and if we want to signal any sort of our desires in our response.
Yeah, that's a really good question, and we have been, we have been actually working with the county on trying to find where there might be, it may be helpful to have them provide kind of that initial, like, lead role. A couple of places include with the urgency ordinance related to evictions, creating a moratorium on evictions, just having them, you know, define what that ordinance looks like. And then, you know, to Alexis's point, this, you know, last year has been, has been a development of a more county-wide collaboration, specifically with the housing element, where they have retained consultants to kind of create the bigger, some of the heavy lift that we're required to do, for example, some of the background reports that we're required to provide. Their consultant have, consultants have prepared those documents because really the information is the same, whether it's the county preparing the information for areas within and around the city, it's the same information. So they've been doing that and sharing with us. But there's definitely opportunity for more, and we'll continue to work with the county and other jurisdictions as well, because there's definitely a lot of ideas that come out of these combined meetings and efforts.
Excellent point, and I think that's my broader point, is that we really, it's, Marin County is a small county, and really having the county take the leadership and convene, it is both the technical expertise, and I'm heartened to hear that their consultants helped with those background data that are reports that we needed, but it's also the convening, it's just bringing folks together to have those conversations. But I will stop with this line of inquiry, but maybe there is a way, and I could go back and look more carefully, to just reinforce how we really would support the county continuing to both provide the technical expertise as well as the convening of these broader conversations. So, okay. Any additional questions before we take public comment? No, not seeing any. Is there anyone in the chambers who would like to address us on this item? Okay, not everyone's rushing down, just so you know, for those that are watching virtually. We will turn to our virtual attendees. Anyone like to comment on this item?
To comment on Zoom, you can use the raise hand feature, and if you're calling in, you can press star nine. I see no hands raised right now, and I'll give everyone a couple seconds. I see no public comment.
Thank you. I will close the public comment and bring it back to the council for any additional comments before motion. Vice Mayor, any additional comments?
Yeah, thank you for the work that you did on the reviewing the grand jury, and I'd also like to thank those who worked on this grand jury report. I know there are jurisdictions in California who would not agree with how we've approached this, so I think we don't have a lot of questions. It's like, yes, we agree with so much of what the report has put forward. I also agree that setting up a JPA is so complicated, and I'm not sure that, I mean, I've learned so many ins and outs with the Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority, JPA, and it's working really well, but it's, it takes, it's moving a ship. I mean, it's a lot of work to get that going, and I really would like us to continue, not only with what has been laid out, but think about other ways that we can support affordable housing opportunities from the, from the, I see for us, we get approved, affordable housing opportunities approved, but not materializing. And what is the, are there strategies, are there additional policies that we can start looking at to help reduce that gap, that timing? Because we really do need to actually have affordable housing on the mark, you know, to have them materialized and not just approved. So, but I don't think having a JPA was actually going to address that gap. So I really appreciate the work done, and also, again, thanks to the grand jury for their report.
Thank you. We'll go this way. Councilmember Bushy?
With the additional comments that I made earlier, I'd be prepared to move approval as it stands.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill?
Thank you, and thank you for the analysis and for formulating our response. I concur with the analysis, in addition to Mary Beth Bushy's comments on finding eight. Building on the vice mayor's comments around the vision for what we all want, which is actually realizing affordable housing, the how, I think, is absolutely in question. I think where we stand as a community is to continue to find ways to optimize that journey. So thank you for your analysis on this, and I appreciated the findings you put forth. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Micah?
Yes, thank you, and I also wanted to echo the sentiment that, thank you for the report, and also to the grand jury, and as, you know, my colleagues were mentioning, housing is one of our top priorities in San Rafael, and, you know, so we will continue working and see creative ways to see how we can, you know, increase, increase that supply. Thank you.
Thank you. Excellent comments. I don't have any to add. I do think, having the clarification, the addition, as Mary Beth was saying, around affordable housing, just putting that out there, because I think, to your point, often people just think that means subsidized, and it really can be so much more. So I think with that, and we trust staff to make those changes, you've heard the input, so with that, I would entertain a motion on this item, and it's a resolution that should be read in. Councilmember Bushy, are you, did you want to?
Yes. I move that we adopt the resolution approving and authorizing the mayor to execute the response to the Marin County Civil Grand Jury Report entitled Affordable Housing, Time for Collaboration in Marin.
And I'll second. Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy?
Aye.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kurtz?
Aye.
Councilmember Yaren Gladi?
Aye.
Mayor Kate?
Aye, that motion carries 5-0. Thank you, Alexis, really appreciate your work on this. Thank you, and thank you, Director Judasee. Thank you. The next item of our special meeting is fiscal year 2021-2022 citywide budget amendments and 2022-2023 update. And I see Director Atiya Haydi.
Yes, hi.
Yep, just push up higher. There you go.
Just gonna hold it.
Okay.
So I won't be up here for too long.
Yeah, no, whatever works.
I am pleased to introduce you to Sean Plate, our principal accountant, who will be presenting to you tonight on fiscal year 21-22 preliminary year-end results and where we're seeing ourselves in fiscal year 22-23 thus far, which was very minor. Sean has been with us for over four years and plays a huge role in our accounting operations, so I'm really excited that he's here in front of you. So thank you.
Fantastic, we're excited too. Welcome, Sean. Yeah.
For that introduction. Oh, thank you.
We're a team here, we help each other out, so we got.
That's wonderful. All right, so.
You've got to share your screens.
Do you have a?
Oh, did I not share?
Yeah, so we know we have the city clerk.
Did not share? Oh, okay, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, sorry. Why is it? Is it not?
You can do. Please show nothing like having 15 people help you on this one.
All right, I'm in.
There you go. Perfect, thank you, Sean.
All right, so on to the budget adjustments for fiscal '22 and our current fiscal year update. So, starting with the general fund, we'll be asking for an additional, additional revenue, an adjustment to revenues for our full American Rescue Plan Act allocation of $16 million. And then on the expenditure side, we'll be asking for additional appropriations of $2.7 million for our additional workers' comp and liability, claims liability. Now, we, we mentioned this back in June. Biannually, we perform an actuarial analysis to determine or to estimate and project what our future liability for these claims are, and we performed that this year. It came back much increased from the prior years, so that's where that comes from. Lastly, increase, we're asking for an increase in transfers. This is an annual adjustment related to Measure E, where we take a third of our Measure E transaction and use tax proceeds, subtract debt service, and allocate it to capital projects. And with other funds, this is detailed more on attachment A, there's a lot there. In total, we're talking about increased revenues and transfers in of $3.8 million and appropriations transfers out of $4.6 million. I've actually already spoken to much of the items in here. $2.7 million is from the Workers' Comp and Liability Program is actually revenue up in the other funds and an expenditure or expense when the claims are incurred. The $700,000 Measure E transfer out is a transfer into the Capital Projects Fund. And then the bulk of the remainder of expenditures can really be spoken to as additional support we were able to provide after the, we've had accumulated balances over the last couple of years as we're ramping up from the pandemic, from the shutdown. Well, moving into the results for this year, we are currently in our audit, and we are looking at net results anywhere from $16 to $17 million in the general fund. And we are requesting that $1.1 million is allocated to our emergency reserve as part of our stabilization policy, and the $15 million earmarked for projects funded by ARPA, and that the remainder gets earmarked to cover our commitment for grant matching related to a Pickleweed Park field renovation project. Lastly, we're in very interesting times, and there's two very extraordinary items that I would like to share with everybody that we will see on our annual reports. First of all, we're going to be reporting a net investment loss of $2 million, and this is related to the rise in interest rates towards the end of the year. What this really essentially means is if we liquidated our entire portfolio at 6:30, we would incur a $2 million loss. It's more of a timing thing. We do intend to hold these securities to maturity, as we always have, and we will be paid the yield that we expected when we purchased these securities. So this, the gains will give way, these losses will give way to gains over time, and we did not lose $2 million, although it will appear that way. The other thing is, on our final, on our year-end report, we will show the pension plan as being fully funded. Now, pension data is really complicated, and it's actually reported a year in arrears. So this is fiscal '21 we're talking about, and what we saw in fiscal '21 was substantial market gains, and that's what's driving this. And what we've seen in '22 is it going the other way. We've had losses, and so we fully expect it to go back down. We've kind of touched it, maybe not really, but we're not there yet, I don't think, but we will be reporting that it is fully funded, because by the measures we are prescribed to do, it's fully funded. Onto the current year, it's really too early to provide much of an update. Onto the, the current year, it's really too early to provide much of an update. We've got two months in the books. However, we are definitely tempering our expectations with relation to a sales tax and use tax. Started to taper off a little bit at the end of fiscal '22. Actually, our July remittance numbers just got released this morning. So it was actually a little higher than I expected. Still below last year's, but above '21. So we're still at this elevated level post shutdown. However, there are a lot of headwinds that we're facing here in the economy. So it'll be interesting to see where, where that, how that affects us locally. But we will definitely be watching it and coming back to you with any recommendations that we could have there. I think with that, I will open it up for questions and thank you and recommend you approve the resolution adopting amendments, authorizing appropriations and transfers for fiscal year '21 and '22.
Thank you. Director Atiya Haydi, did you want to add something? Are you here for just questions?
So I'm going to stand here for questions, but I did want to clarify three things because I could see your minds thinking about it, especially Councilmember Mary Beth Bushy. So the 1.1 million dollars that we are recommending be allocated to the emergency fund is within the 10% policy. Earlier, we had come to you in June and said we're hoping to increase it slightly to start getting us to a higher percentage. But this year, as we analyzed year end, we decided to hold off on that because really the remainder of those funds need to be allocated to capital projects and federal grant matches. And so we are within our policy requirement of 10%, but we did not increase it. And then, yes.
So when you say within, are we at 9%?
We are at.
Oh, we're at 10%?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
And that's what I wish, I wasn't clear. I just wanted.
No, thank you.
You and I wrote down the same question.
Yeah, we're at.
Okay.
And then the 2.7 million for the workers' comp and general liability, that was something that we brought to you also in June to give you a heads up on. But we hadn't made the actual adjustment. We told you that we would come back at year end. So now we're just asking that the appropriations be increased as we had already recommended. So.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Questions, Vice Mayor.
The only question I have is the, the amount for the match amount for the pickleweed. Is that grant already available? I mean, have we received that or is that a pending piece?
We have been approved for that grant. We haven't seen the agreement yet and put the final touches on it, but we have received grant approval.
And that was because of we had that match amount. That's great. Thank you.
And because we applied over and over and over for those funds for a decade. Thank you, staff, for doing that. Thank you. Councilmember Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the report. That was great. I had a question because when you mentioned that we met our pension plan this year and that next year in arrears, we'll likely see it drop. Is there any degree of estimation we'd want to make by how much it will be off next year when we look back?
Oh, Ben, I would, that would be amazing if I could estimate that. But what I can say is, so this is based on a, a report. It's actually fiscal '20 data updated for fiscal '21. And so when the fiscal '21 actuarial report was released in February, we were at about 95%. So that's taking into all, all new factors. So I would expect somewhere between 90 and 95, maybe, maybe less. But the goal, both, the goalposts just get moved with this quite often. So it's really hard to predict. Yeah, that's, that's all I've got.
I mean, in order of magnitude, is it millions or tens of millions in that percentages?
So, may I?
Yeah, go ahead.
I agree with everything Sean said and just to kind of put it into a dollar amount. When we saw fiscal year '21, '22 unfunded liability decrease, we saw our contribution decrease. And that was in the amount of about 1.1 million, a little bit less than that. So I would imagine that that 1.1 million would come back to haunt us for fiscal year '23, '24. And so I would, I think it's approximately a million dollars. There are other things, there are other variables that could change that. But if they, all those variables were the same and we just look at the discount rate, the investment rate, it could be a million dollars.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Mica.
No questions. Thank you. You kind of like answered the one I had. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bushy.
Big picture question. Bring the microscope up a couple of levels. Is it a accurate summary to say our budget remains balanced? Our reserve requirements as we have adopted them remain fully funded? And we, although it's a fluid situation on the revenue side, there will be updates as the fiscal year unfolds.
Absolutely, absolutely. We've been, we've basically gone through two years where revenue has, has outperformed expectations. And now we might be getting into a year where that's not the case. And so that's really where, where you see these, this, us coming to you from with appropriations requests is that we've had extra revenue for, for these.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to follow up on that same question. So do we have updates mid-year? Just because there is kind of volatility. So we will have another update in February or March. Just, okay. The sales tax, hopefully our community's been out buying, shopping in San Rafael. So that will be reflected in those numbers. Okay.
Yeah, Mayor Kate.
Yes, please.
Definitely February, March, but we will absolutely come to you sooner if we think that there's something that's happening that we should be making you aware of that's outside the ordinary business.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay. I don't see any further questions at this time. There might be some after public comment. So I will open up the public comment. Don't see anyone in the chambers. So we will see if there are folks listening in who would like to comment on this item.
To comment on Zoom, you can use the raise hand feature and if you're calling in by phone, you can press star nine. I see no hands raised right now, but I'll give everyone a couple of seconds. I see no public comment.
Thank you. I will close the public comment and bring back for comments. I'll start with the vice mayor. No comments. Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Hill.
I'll just say, thank you, Councilmember Bushy, for asserting a summary and having it validated. That's really helpful. And thank you for the reporters. Great to have you before us today to walk us through where we are. Much appreciated.
Thank you. Councilmember Mica.
No, yeah, really appreciations for everything that you're doing and keeping us on track. So thank you.
Councilmember Bushy.
Keep up the good work. We'll see you at the midterm update.
Well, you had that beautiful summary that Councilmember Hill referred to. Would you like to make a motion on this item?
I would. I move that we adopt the resolution adopting amendments to the City of San Rafael Budget for fiscal year 2021, 2022 for the purpose of confirming authorized appropriations and transfers.
I second. Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kurt.
Aye.
Councilmember Yedain Skladi.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye. That motion carries five zero. Thank you, Sean. Thank you, Director, for your great work. That item has been completed. And as this is a special meeting, we had two agenda items. We have completed both of these. So I'm going to adjourn this meeting.
And I'm sorry.
Welcome everyone to the San Rafael City Council meeting for Monday, September 19. I we met in closed session. I will ask the city attorney if there's any reportable action.
Good evening, Mayor Kate. Members of the council, members of the community. No reportable action was taken in closed session.
Thank you. I'll request the city clerk to call the role.
Councilmember Bushy.
Present.
Councilmember Hill.
Present.
Vice Mayor Kurtz.
Present.
Councilmember Yaren Skoladi.
Present.
Mayor Kate.
Present. All five of us are here. So I have a few opening remarks. So welcome. We're glad you're here. If you're here in person or you're attending virtually and listening in. At our previous council meeting, we heard from many in the community who expressed their anger, concern, sadness, or frustration about a police incident that occurred in July. And at that previous meeting, and as at that previous meeting, tonight, we're here to listen to what you had to say. So in addition to tonight's public forum, we, the council and myself, are always available to meet with any of you on this or any other important city issue or any city issue. Local government is about having access to your city and elected officials. I can assure you that all of the council will be part of the conversation with the community regarding the police incident and not just Councilmember Yaren Skoladi, as this is a San Rafael issue and not just a District One East San Rafael issue. So we welcome these conversations, both to share ideas and also to update you on the next steps. We recognize the importance of these conversations to start rebuilding trust. So we're contracting with someone from the National Association for Civilian Oversight of Law Enforcement, also known as NACOL. With their guidance and expertise, the city will examine training and improvements, internal systems, improvements too, excuse me, internal systems, as well as explore ways that the community can be involved in a police accountability or oversight. The NACOL representative will assist us in connecting with the community in the days and months ahead. So it is important to all of us that we have accurate information and clear explanations. So to that end, at the close of my remarks and prior to public comment, the city attorney will give an update on the investigation as well as explain his decision-making process. His role is separate from the city council as he is a separately elected city attorney and he is not appointed by the city council. So thank you for being here and being a part of this conversation. Madam City Clerk, at this time, I would like to amend the agenda order and place the city manager report directly after my comments and prior to public open time.
Yes.
Okay. With that agenda being so changed, I am going to turn it over though to the city clerk first to explain how public comment works this evening for people participating virtually.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. Before we begin, we'd like to announce that tonight's city council meeting will include Spanish language simultaneous and consecutive interpretation provided by qualified interpreters on the Spanish channel now through the completion of the city manager and city council member reports. If watching on Zoom, you can join the Zoom channel by clicking on the interpretation icon in the Zoom toolbar. It looks like a globe. We have posted a link to the Zoom meeting in the description of the video on YouTube. If you're attending in person and don't have access to the Zoom meeting from your mobile device, please come see me and I can get you set up with a device so you can listen to the meeting in Spanish. As a reminder, we ask that everyone participating tonight, please speak slowly to allow our interpreter to effectively express your comments. And I'll invite Pablo Charles to come and interpret that.
The, bueno, esta la reunión esta noche va a incluir interpretación simultánea y consecutiva al español desde ahora hasta el fin de los informes. Favor de hacer clic en el icono de interpretación, parece un globo de rajeón en la barra de herramientas de Zoom. También está incluido un enlace en YouTube si quieren hacer clic ahí para poder unirse también al español. Y si están presentes en persona y no tienen acceso por sus dispositivos móviles, pueden pasar conmigo y yo les puedo prestar un aparato para escuchar en español. Y favor a todos hablar despacio para que los interpretes puedan interpretar claramente.
This meeting tonight is being recorded and streamed live to YouTube and members of the public can provide public comment by phone by calling 669-900-9128 using the meeting ID 89926359885 and pressing star nine to raise your hand for comments. Or you can comment and watch directly through Zoom using the link on the agenda and use the raise hand feature through Zoom. If you experience technical difficulties, please email city.clerk@cityofcenterfell.org. Displayed on the podium and the projector is a two-minute timer to help you stay within the two-minute timeframe. You're invited, though not required, to introduce yourself and say what part of Centerfell you reside in or if you're from outside of Centerfell. We are offering closed captioning. We are offering closed captioning for this evening's meeting on Zoom, and you can select the live transcript button on Zoom to enable this feature. Thank you.
Thank you, and we will all try very hard to speak slowly for our interpreters. So as the agenda was amended, I will turn to the Assistant City Manager to invite the city attorney to speak.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm going to defer to the city attorney to make some comments, and then I'll come back to you with my report afterward.
Thank you to the Assistant City Manager for giving me this time on the city manager's report. Thank you, Mayor Kate, for altering the agenda and for giving me this opportunity. Good evening again to the council and members of the community. I will be looking at the council tonight as I speak, as I typically do. And of course, I'm speaking to you, but really, my remarks tonight are for the community, because there's been so much interest that we've received in the police issue, the investigation, the choice of the investigator. And so that will be the subject of my remarks tonight. There are a few people in the chambers this evening, not as many as I expected after the crowd we had last time. But I know that there are people that are watching on Zoom, and I also know that all of our meetings are taped and that people will have an opportunity, if they so desire, to watch these remarks when they're recorded. So I will start again. I am Rob Epstein. I am the elected city attorney of San Rafael. Having an elected city attorney makes San Rafael different than all the other cities and towns in Marin County, as well as the county of Marin and its county council, because all of them, including the council, excuse me, including the county, appoint their attorney. And the attorney serves at the pleasure of the elected body. Here in San Rafael, in our charter, it's always been this way, the city attorney is elected. For the past two weeks, I have been receiving from the community emails and calls, and have read posts directed to me on Facebook and Instagram. This is very unusual for the city attorney. My work usually draws little attention. Many have been demanding that I reconsider my appointment of Paul Henry, a retired police lieutenant, as the person who will conduct an internal affairs investigation, which will be the first step of a complex process. The matter concerns the July 27 incident in the Canal neighborhood, which was captured on video that has been in the news. The laws that apply to how the investigation is conducted and what happens afterward are complicated. It is oftentimes difficult to make sense of the law and how it is applied. Lawyers and judges struggle with it every day. My specific subject tonight is known in part as employment law, but we are operating in the even more specific subject area of police disciplinary proceedings. That subject, the investigation and the potential disciplinary outcomes, is governed by many statutes and appellate cases. It takes a semester class to discuss all the ins and outs of the subject. I will do my best with limited time tonight. In addition to what I am saying tonight, the IJ kindly printed a Marin voice column that I submitted that explains my decision. A copy of what I wrote is available on the city website in Spanish. Yes, City Clerk, it's in Spanish and English. But the IJ only gave me 700 words, and those of you who know me know what a terrible restriction that was for me and how hard it was for me to limit myself in that way. So tonight, I'd like to take a little more time to explain who I am and why I made the choice that I did. First, I'd like to say that I'm grateful to all of those who took the time to tell me and the city council how they feel about this issue. Please know that I want to hear everything that all of them, all of you, have to say, even if you and I disagree. You, I say you, I'm, again, considering the public, have every right to disagree and to express your position to me and the city council. I only ask that you please hear me and consider my role and my own personal history here in San Rafael and what that brings to this issue. I don't expect to change anyone's minds by my remarks tonight. I only help to explain myself. As I said, I am the city attorney. You see me at the city council meetings, but I don't say much in here, except when the city council asks a legal question or I otherwise need to give legal advice during the meeting. Like the city staff and the city council, most of our work is conducted outside of city council meetings. My job is to represent and give legal advice to my client, which is the city. In communicating with me, the city ultimately speaks through its highest body, the elected mayor and city council. But while I provide advice to them, I also advise the city staff, and in particular here, in an employee disciplinary process. The subject incident happened on July 27th. The, the city did not talk about it until the most recent city council meeting on September 6th, on what was probably the hottest day of the year, when so many members of the public showed up, having already seen the video, to address the council. Why did it take six weeks for the community to hear about it, they asked? What has the city attorney and everyone else at City Hall been doing about it until now? It is important for me to explain the timeline of what happened in the Marin County Court regarding the incident, which I and the city council only learned about later after it happened. As I've said, and as the community is now aware, the incident happened on July 27th. The officers who were responsible for the preparation of the police report completed it, transmitted it to the office of the district attorney, and the district attorney's office filed a criminal complaint six days later on August 2nd, with four separate charges, including battery on a police officer. The initial, I'm telling you these facts that I've obtained from the court docket that is available on the court website, MarinCourt.org. Again, this is all from information that I received well after these events that I'm now describing. So the case got filed on August 2nd. The initial court hearing in that case was held on Monday, August 15th, two weeks after that. The defendant entered a not guilty plea and refused to waive time, which required under the law, the scheduling of a preliminary hearing within 15 days. The judge set the preliminary hearing for the following Tuesday, August 23rd. On that date, the deputy district attorney told the court that she had just received the body worn camera video the day before and had not had an opportunity to review it in its entirety. Over the objection of the defendant, the judge agreed to continue the preliminary hearing for three more days to Friday, August 26th. On that date, the deputy district attorney told the court that after her review of the police report and the body worn camera footage, quote, "The people are unable to prove the charges," end quote. She made a motion to dismiss the case, which the judge granted, ending the case against the individual who was arrested. The week following that Friday, which was the week of August 29, was the first that my office, police command staff, and city management staff first learned about the incident, just before the story first hit the media, which was also just before the Labor Day weekend, from which we all returned to our council meeting on Tuesday, September 6th, the day after Labor Day. From the moment I learned what happened and watched the video, I have been working to commence the investigation that was triggered by what occurred. What does this process look like? How does it work? Every piece, each component of it, must follow rules and procedures prescribed by law. The process starts with an internal affairs investigation, which is known as an IA. At the same time, in this case, the district attorney has announced that her office has initiated its own separate criminal investigation of the incident. Moreover, as was reported in the news, the FBI has contacted the city, requesting that we provide it, the FBI, with evidence concerning the incident. The city's goal in this matter is to have 100% transparency to the greatest extent that the law will allow. We welcome the investigations and invite close scrutiny of the incident and of our police department overall. And let me be clear, the local district attorney investigation, as well as any federal investigation that may occur, are totally separate and distinct from the city's internal affairs investigation, which has a very singular purpose. The point is solely and only to measure the conduct of the involved officers against established written policies to determine whether those policies were followed or not. Given the allegations that have been made in court that I just described, and the media, the scoping of the investigation will have to consider the relevance and applicability of a number of written police policies, all of which you can read on the San Rafael Police Department website, including the following. The officer's duty to be 100% truthful, honest, and accurate in everything they do, including in particular, the writing of their police reports. The officer's duty never to use force unless it is necessary, and if force is required to be used, never to use excessive force. And I should say unreasonable force. That's the way it's framed in the written policy. The duty of an officer who is present and observing another officer using force clearly beyond what is necessary to intercede, to prevent the use of unreasonable force. And an officer's duty never to engage in any act that brings discredit upon the police department. After determining from all of the policies which are applicable and which are at issue, the investigating, excuse me, the investigator conducting the IA will examine the entire incident in detail, all of the written police reports, all of the body cam videos, the photographs, any and all physical evidence. The investigator will conduct interviews of all of the officers involved, plus any and all witnesses, including the individual who was arrested, if that person is willing to be interviewed by the investigator. The officers must submit to the investigators, excuse me, the officers must submit to the investigation and answer all of the investigator's questions under both applicable state law and department policy. Any refusal to answer the questions by the involved officers would constitute insubordination and in itself would be grounds for termination. After completing all of this work, all of the interviews, the investigator then will prepare a written report with specific findings as to whether the officers involved violated or did not violate each of the applicable policies. The final report is delivered to the police chief, who will then fulfill his key role in the process. The police chief will review the investigative report and the investigator's findings and make the initial determination on behalf of the city as to what disciplinary action, if any, should be imposed on the involved officers, including and up to the potential of termination of employment. Any employee who is the subject of discipline is legally entitled to an internal city appeal, and then has a right to contest the discipline at a private arbitration before a binding arbitrator. This is pursuant to our labor agreements with our employees. The legality and integrity of the IA investigation are tested in the arbitration process. The subject employee may point to any perceived irregularity in the investigation and disciplinary process to argue that their discipline should be reversed by the arbitrator. For many years, since longer than I have been an attorney, these IA investigations have always been conducted by police officers. Many members of the public are saying that the result of the investigation of police officers can't be trusted if the investigation is conducted by a police officer or a former police officer. I have two things that I want to discuss about that. First is about the process itself, which I want to explain in more detail, and then about me and my job as city attorney, representing this city and being elected by the community to do so. First, I want to describe why, in this specific legal context, the most defensible opinions are those reached by a professional who does the same kind of work as the person whose performance is being evaluated. For example, take medical malpractice, an area in which I actually have some experience. Earlier in my career, I represented individuals who were suing doctors whose conduct was alleged to have caused injuries, and in some cases, even death. Each of those cases required me to hire expert doctors to give opinions about those doctors who were alleged to have made mistakes. Similarly, findings of misconduct against a police officer are most straightforward to defend when those findings are made by another police officer. In this case, if the city ends up at a future arbitration, where the city concerns any discipline imposed against any police officer, the city will be required to defend the discipline by defending the investigation and the investigator's findings. In my judgment as the city attorney, for the city, it is not a forum in which it should rely on a co-investigator, which has been suggested by some, a non-professional investigator, or really, anyone who doesn't do these kind of investigations all the time. At this moment in history, the only kind of person whom I can rely on to do it correctly in a way that I can be confident that I will be able to defend, if I need to, in an arbitration, is a person who has substantial training and experience as a police officer. Maybe this will all change someday, and this process might look different in the future, but that is the way the law and process operate now that we are living with in this moment. Along with the fact that Paul Henry, the person whom I appointed to be the investigator, is a retired police officer, people have also complained about his work as a Santa Rosa police officer in connection with the investigation of the terribly tragic shooting in 2013 of a 13-year-old boy in Sonoma County named Andy Lopez by a Sonoma County deputy sheriff. That matter ultimately resulted in a finding of no criminal liability involving that deputy sheriff who fired that shot. In that case, the FBI and the Sonoma County District Attorney's Office conducted their own independent investigations and reached their own independent conclusions not to file a criminal complaint against that officer. Mr. Henry had no involvement in either that district attorney or FBI investigation, nor will he nor will he have any involvement in the Marin County District Attorney's investigation of the July 27 incident in San Rafael, nor in any FBI or any other investigation that may be initiated regarding that matter. He's only been hired for this one specific Internal Affairs employee personnel investigation. In addition to Mr. Henry's involvement in that single case in 2013, which many people have raised in emails that they've sent to me and in phone calls that we've received, I can tell you that he separately has performed more than 150 independent Internal Affairs investigations. For those of you who believe that he will not be neutral in this particular case or cannot be neutral, I don't believe that, or I wouldn't have hired him. And I personally, I personally, won't allow the process to be anything other than completely fair and unbiased. Over the years, San Rafael has been like many, if not most, other California cities in that the police IA investigations have been done in-house by San Rafael captain or lieutenant. In the IA context, an independent investigation refers to having an individual outside the department conduct the investigation. We clearly heard community concerns and hired an independent investigator who is not a part of San Rafael's police department, and he's no longer an active police officer himself, he's retired. For those of you who believe that a former police officer will never make findings against another officer, please know that Mr. Henry hasn't been, has, has been involved in many IA investigations in which he has made findings of misconduct against other police officers. As for other concerns that have been stated about Mr. Henry's background, it is my job as the city attorney to ensure that all aspects of the disciplinary process, including the investigation, are free from any bias or prejudice based on the race, ethnicity, gender, or any other aspect of the individual who was arrested, or of the officers who were involved, or anybody else. And yet, nothing that I have said thus far may persuade some that the city's Internal Affairs investigation and disciplinary process in this case will end up with a fair result. So this is the part where I want to tell you a little more about me and how I view my role as city attorney, because it is my job to supervise the entire police disciplinary process and make sure it is done properly, that the investigation is neutral and without any bias, and that the result of the process is lawful and just. I have lived in San Rafael my entire life, and I am old. I am older than this City Hall building in which we are sitting, and it is really old. My brother, sister, and I all attended San Rafael City Schools, and our three children did too. My wife is present here in the chambers tonight. My brother, I already said that. I still go to San Rafael High two nights a week to coach the mock trial team, which is one of my favorite activities that I get to do. I have very deep roots in this community. I have been an attorney for 31 years and the elected city attorney for 15 years. The community has elected me and re-elected me, the city clerk will correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it's four times. And I will be up for reelection again in 2024 at the next presidential election cycle. I've worked over many years to earn my reputation in our community. If you were to ask any one of our 12 sitting Marin County Superior Court judges about my reputation for honesty, ethics, and fairness, or you were to ask any of the retired judges, I am confident that you would receive a consistent response. I have nothing to gain and really everything to lose from overseeing a process that is unfair, or cooked, or pre-baked, or fixed, or whatever anyone wants to call it. And I certainly would never be involved in anything that was tainted with any kind of racial, or ethnic, or any other kind of bias. Instead, I personally will oversee this investigation and this entire disciplinary process to ensure that it is done right. The result must be fair, impartial, and any discipline that may be imposed on any officer or officers must be able to stand up to challenge an arbitration and be permanently binding on any such officers and the city. I often say that you hire an attorney to give you their best advice and not what you want to hear. It is very frequently the case that an attorney's advice is something the client does not want to hear and doesn't like. It's just part of being an attorney. I have gotten used to it over many years, but it has never gotten any easier for me. The city has a strong interest in having the interviews of the involved officers and other witnesses conducted as soon as possible, without any further delay. Each of the interviews must be scheduled with the involved officers and their attorneys, as each of them is entitled to have an attorney present when they're interviewed. In a case, excuse me, such as this, with multiple witnesses and a substantial amount of evidence to review with the witnesses, they will not be short interviews. This is why I already told the IJ what I know deep in my bones, which is that it is very likely to take months. You would like it to take weeks, you city council, the public would like it to take weeks, and believe me, so would I, but I have to tell you what I know to be true based on 31 years of experience in scheduling with litigation attorneys and their clients dates to accomplish things like interviews and depositions and trials. In this case, we already experienced a one-month delay before the IA was even opened, after which I immediately started looking for an investigator. We made a lot of calls. When Mr. Henry's name came up and I contacted and interviewed him, I confirmed for myself that he's more than qualified for this assignment that requires, as I was saying earlier, unique qualifications and experience. In my view, at this juncture, it would be a critical error to dismiss Mr. Henry and replace him with someone else, or saddle him with a co-investigator, which I said some have suggested. Mr. Henry already has begun the investigation. We do not want to hire someone else who would have to start all over again, and we are extremely unlikely to locate an independent investigator more experienced than Mr. Henry, who is also ready at this moment to drop whatever they are doing, come to San Rafael and restart this already pending investigation. And, most importantly, even if we did that, and regardless who they were, the firing of one investigator due to public pressure on the city attorney and the hiring of a second would in itself give any police officer who might be the subject of discipline a gift of an argument that the city had been making decisions at the outset based on prejudgment and bias against the officers. In other words, in my view, the very thing that many members of the public are asking for, the dismissal of Mr. Henry and the hiring of a new investigator, could make it more difficult for the city to defend any potential disciplinary action at an arbitration. In other words, it would create a risk that the city could lose the arbitration, which would mean that the city's potential determination that an officer should be terminated, which is one of many possibilities here, but if that were to occur and if that argument were successful, then the whole decision could be overturned by the arbitrator. Thus, the easy thing for me to do would be to bow to public pressure regarding my choice of the investigator. But my ethical duty to my client, the city of San Rafael, requires me to do what I believe is right, which in this case isn't the easy thing to do. Mr. Henry is fully qualified to conduct this investigation. It is critical that we get it done as soon as possible. For this reason, plus those reasons that I already have stated, Mr. Henry will continue and complete the investigation. That said, I deeply respect all of the opinions that I have received on the subject, including those that others may choose to express tonight or in the future. But with that said, I hope that everyone now understands why I will not be changing my decision regarding Mr. Henry. In closing, everyone's favorite thing to hear me say when I'm talking, I want to say a word about the public disclosure of the investigation report after the process is over. We've received a lot of inquiry about this legal issue. As I said earlier, the city welcomes the scrutiny and would far prefer to have complete and total transparency about all aspects of this matter. And yet, once again, my job in connection with the city's disclosure of information about the investigation is simply to make sure that the city follows the law. Anyone can Google California Penal Code Section 832.7. That's Penal Code Section 832.7. That is the statute that sets forth the general rule of confidentiality that governs the report, investigation, and findings, and enumerates certain important exceptions to that general rule. Those exceptions were broadened in an amendment that became effective only on June, June 30th of this year. It is those rules in Section 832.7 that will govern the city's disclosure of the investigation after it is over. As I already have said, I promise that the city will disclose all aspects of the investigation that it is legally permitted to disclose under the law. Thank you for your careful attention to my remarks. As I said at the outset, I don't expect to change the minds of those who disagree with my decision. And I, I, I am the city council, I speak for the city council, but I know this because I know them so well, both I and the city council very much want to hear what you have to say, whether or not you agree or disagree. Thank you very much, Mayor Kate. And I do want to remind everyone of the order of things now, because we went a little out of order with these remarks, and we're going to now have open time for public expression, at which people can talk about anything basically, including about the police matter if they wish. Then we will, at the conclusion of open time for public expression, we will conclude the city manager's report, because I preempted it with city attorney remarks, and I know the city manager has some things, or our assistant city manager has some things that she wants to say. And then, as usual, and which we skipped the last time, we will have council member reports, and then we'll go to the regular agenda. And after the council member reports, we'll have the period for public comment on city manager's report and council member reports. Thank you.
Thank you, city attorney, and I will also add that his remarks will be posted on the website. We have a city page specifically around this conversation, and they will be there tomorrow as well as a link. So if you don't want to read it, you can watch him say it live. So with that, as the city attorney just said, it's open time for public expression on anything not on tonight's agenda. We have several items on our consent calendar. We have a public hearing about the streeterries and boards and commissions. So at this time, anything not on the agenda, you are welcome to approach the council and share your thoughts. You have two minutes. So if anyone in the chambers would like to speak, now is the time to come down. Not seen anyone moving on this item, so we will go to our virtual community, and I'll ask the city clerk if there's anyone who'd like to speak.
Just to comment on Zoom, you can use the raised hand feature, and if you're dialing in by phone, you can press star nine to raise your hand. I do see two hands raised.
Yeah, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can, go ahead.
This is Ava Crisanti. You know, I hardly know what to say about that, although I think the city attorney, that statement needs its own public comment response, because it appears to be a totally separate item on the agenda. So there should have been, what you should have done is, is let him give his comments out of order, out of the order that was on the agenda, and then had public comment on his comments, and then gone into public comments for items not on the agenda. For now, I'm going to just point out that the problems with the San Rafael Police Department, I have been contacting you about this for approximately 18 months. I've written endless letters, I, you know, I've run CPRAs. I've received the body cams showing your officers violating the law. I've shown where your officers have lied, they've been permitted to lie by the city, they've been permitted to turn on and off their body cam with full permission from the city attorney. So I was not too impressed by his statement. It was, it was funny. I mean, it was funny watching him sweat, but you know, he's, he's been a big part of the problem, but it's also important to note that, you know, you have had a lot of notice about the problems within San Rafael Police, and at every opportunity, you ignored them willfully. You willfully ignored them because it was inconvenient, because law enforcement is very powerful in this county, and because this is a very powerful city, a very powerful county.
We're ready for you.
Yes, thank you. This is Jonathan Freeman. That was quite a statement, and it looks like it was a shining moment, because you took at least three drinks of water. So I want to note a couple of things. One is that there's still a lot of white people involved, and you have a community of color who is quite angry and hurt and apparently have experienced a fair amount of abuse by the police that doesn't seem to have been documented, but I can't say much about that, I don't know. I will say this, is that this will bring about, as it should, a heightened scrutiny, scrutiny of police behavior. I would think there might be more reports of police misconduct. And so I'm glad to hear Mayor Kate announce the group that's coming in to talk about what could very well be a healing for the community. And in terms of a police oversight board, that really needs to happen, I think, that the, the community does need healing. Friends of mine tell me that out in District Three, which is almost all white folks, there are people quite upset about this. So there is a lot to be gained from such an effort that I proposed a couple of times I've spoken. So I hope to see that progress as soon as possible.
Stephen, you'll need to unmute. We're ready for your comments. I'm seeing no other hands raised outside of Stephen's. So we'll give everyone a couple of seconds.
Okay, I will close the open time for public expression and bring it back to the city manager for their report and then the council member reports. Assistant city manager.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and members of the community. I'm Christina Lillavich, the assistant city manager, sitting in for city manager Jim Schutz tonight. I'm Christina Lillovich, the Assistant City Manager, sitting in for City Manager Jim Schutz tonight. I also want to address the community in my comments tonight and acknowledge the individuals who have shared their concerns with city staff and council members over the last few weeks regarding the July 27th police incident. I've heard the heartache and anguish in your voices, and I want you to know that we are listening. We care deeply about all of you and want to work with you to continue to find ways for your voices to be heard. We understand how important it is for the community to have access to city staff and council members. To that end, we are working on creating more opportunities for community conversations going forward. If you'd like to get more information, you can go to the website that Mayor Kate was mentioning. You can provide us with your email address or your WhatsApp cellphone number to get automatic updates when new information is posted. Also, just a reminder that September is Still Suicide Awareness Prevention Month, and Marin County's Behavioral Health Team is hosting a number of community events over the next two weeks. There's great information on the website, which is wwwधर्मप्रवेशिन.org. And that's all for my comments this evening. Thank you, Mayor Kate.
Thank you, Assistant City Manager Lillovich. So we now have council member reports. We were not able to get to them in our meeting two weeks ago. So that might be quite a lengthy list, but we'll try to be as brief as possible. I'll start with the Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I'm just going to pick some of the highlights. Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority, we're continuing to meet. Supervisor Redoni is now the Chair of our 17-member JPA Board, Joint Power Authority. So we have a lot of projects that are underway. The unique thing with the work that the MWPA has done is we were able to consolidate a lot of the SEQA work that had to be done so we can now move on these projects. So the shaded fuel break that it really encompasses much of Marin is underway in a number of different locations by the different jurisdictions. So that's a big project for all of us. Did a ribbon cutting for Jonathan's Place, which was previously known as Mill Street. That is now open. When we did the ribbon cutting, it wasn't open yet. Now it's open. So that's good. And so it's an amazing facility. So I hope everyone has an opportunity to see it at some point. We also did a ribbon cutting at School of Rock, which is a new facility on Redwood Highway, right off of, I guess it's Freitas. Is it there? Yep, Redwood Highway. Yep. And great facility, and a lot of kids already signed up and participating in that program. And on Sunday, or Saturday, we did the coastal cleanup at McGinnis Park and had a great representation of the community. Many of the scouts were out there helping. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill.
This is going way back. But on August 8th, we did hold our Board and Commission interviews for Planning Commission, Park and Rec Commission, and Public Art Review Board. We made our selections. On August 25th, I too attended the opening celebration for Jonathan's Place at 190 Mill Street. It provides over 40 shelter beds and 32 permanent supportive housing units. Obviously, maybe it's not obvious, but we should take every opportunity to create more developments like Jonathan's Place and at the same time, continue to mitigate and eliminate journeys into homelessness, houselessness. I had the opportunity to visit Aldisley Senior Living on Wednesday, September 14. That's a wonderful facility. Obviously, it is going through a process right now, so I won't comment on that process further. And yesterday, on Sunday, during the rain, got the opportunity to attend Porch Fest in Gristle Park. It was wonderful to be there. It was raining, and it was wonderful. The community was out. The energy was real. And it was great to have, coming out of the deep pandemic, to experience that energy, very much like made madness. And I'm looking forward to more opportunities to engage with a community like that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Yoren Skulati.
Yes, thank you. So yeah, also going back, I have several meetings related to climate change. So I participated in the Bay Wave Sea Level Rise Meeting, our quarterly climate group meeting with the city, also MC Board Meeting. And I had the honor to participate as well in the Sustainable San Rafael Event, where they were honoring the 2021-2022 Sustainability Hero Bell Call for spearheading the Ecologically Sound Practices Partnership and the Marine Biomass Project. And it's so refreshing, so inspiring to be surrounded by so many people with so much knowledge about the environment. So I feel we are like in really good hands. Some of the common denominators of all these meetings is around electrifying, building decarbonization, and also the EV strategy update. I'm also doing highlights, so many things. I participated, I attended the Cal Cities Conference for mayors and councils. And it was great. I love to see other elected officials, other mayors and councils from different cities all around the state and with very similar issues that we are facing here. And as many of them, we know that we have to be creative. It's always good to hear from other cities to see how they are addressing that. So definitely, I really enjoyed that experience. So, and let's see. I also participated in a meeting around the Pickleweed Park Field Renovation Discussion with our Marine Water Board and also Canal Alliance, trying to get some also funding, but really excited about the prayer that we have with the city and see how it might actually be happening sooner rather than later. So very excited about that. And then I know that this coming Friday, we have a movie in the park at Pickleweed. And the movie starts at seven, and I really look forward to be there with the community. And also had several conversations with the different community leaders and, you know, neighbors for the past few weeks related to, you know, the incident that happened. And I'm really look forward to continue working around that and continue listening to the community and working with them as we move forward with them as well in mind. So that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bushky.
I'll hit the highlights and not mention the other events that have already previously been mentioned. I met today with Supervisor-elect Sackett to discuss some of the issues along Point San Pedro Road. There are pockets of county and territory along there that creates a need for collaboration. One such area is Marina Boulevard, where we received some complaints about traffic. And the Supervisor-elect was very receptive to the issues. And I anticipate a productive working relationship regarding that matter. I had met the week previously with residents of Marina Boulevard who were unhappy with the speeding through their neighborhood. For context, Marina Boulevard is just downhill, down east Mission Boulevard from the high school. And people late for class are often speeding through there. As a parent of former San Rafael High students, I am aware of the situation, let's just say. We also discussed the residential development going on out at Lock Lomond, which segues into my next report, the Lock Lomond Oversight Committee. The residential development is going ahead out there. The houses are being built. There are three commercial buildings that have not been built yet, and the developers are stymied in their attempts to move forward with those. So interesting, we're in, we are literally rolling into our third decade of working on this project. Not kidding. But to end on and up of that report, the kayak launched dock is installed. And two old hands at kayaking have assured me that it's the best kayak dock they've ever seen. So I encourage everyone to come out to the Lock Lomond Marina. There's a wonderful ADA accessible kayak launch ramp at your disposal. Next two things are also related. The Central Marine Sanitation Agency, our wastewater treatment agency. I was able to go on a plant tour there. One of our digesters is down, so I was able to see inside the whole thing. It was super cool and very nerdy. All of the equipment. What was interesting, though, we're also talking about recycled water from that plant as a source of water for Marin County. And because the wastewater treatment plant is not the water purveyor for the area, we must have permission from the water purveyor, Marin Municipal Water District, before we can pursue any of our recycled water projects. They range from small ones piping our very saline secondary treated water over the hill to San Quentin to be used in their dual-plum toilets or in their boilers. That's a $7 to $10 million project that we're very interested in doing. But again, we can't move forward without Marin Municipal Water District to approve of two large recycled water projects, which cost up to $200 million and would provide a significant amount of recycled water for the former Marin County. Now, you remember I said our water was saline. Another thing that, another event that I attended was the San Rafael Sanitation District, our sewer collection agency. One of the things we're doing there is retiring a main on Bay Drive that is literally under the bay water. Guess where that saltwater is coming from? So we're going to be doing testing before and after when we take that main out of service and to see what impact that will have on the salinity, which will again help with our recycled water at the Central Marine Sanitation Agency. And the last thing was a lovely event last week, the San Rafael Library Foundation Donor Dinner. The Library Foundation's mission is to build a new library. And the dinner was absolutely wonderful because every single living mayor of San Rafael was in attendance for former mayors and Mayor Kate as well. Our speaker for the evening was the Speaker of the California Senate, Mike McGuire. And he gave a wonderful speech about the role libraries have played in his life and his commitment to additional funding for our library. So that was great. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just add mine to what has been going on. I also attended a conference, a different conference. I attended a mayor conference that is a national one in Tacoma, Washington. And it's fascinating to see just how government is here in California versus other states, especially around environmental policy. Learned a lot about how data can be used to drive policy decisions, housing zoning, guaranteed income projects, which there is one here in Marin County. So very interesting to meet with other mayors throughout the nation. Locally, SMART, Sonoma, Marin Area Rapid Transit, we have met twice. But I'll just have a highlight. In August of 2022, that we just finished, there is 76% of ridership as compared to 2019 pre-COVID. So slowly getting back to the ridership. There was a 17% increase alone in August due to students and teachers utilizing SMART. So that's something SMART is going to continue to work with as a population and to drive the ridership. Staying on the transit theme, Marin Transit also met. And we had a, I have to say, slightly depressing presentation. It was an update on labor shortages that are happening all the way from the bus drivers to the mechanics, really all aspects of the transit experience. So discussing how we can work with a consultant to bring people in in those different job categories. The Transportation Authority of Marin, I'm San Rafael's representative. We canceled the August meeting, but so our next meeting is this Thursday. And I bring it up because San Rafael on the agenda is the possibility for San Rafael to receive O-BAG. Let me see, I never want to do acronyms. Association of Bay Area Government, three local funds of around $5 million that would actually help fund the San Rafael Canal Active Transportation Improvement. So that would go specifically to the canal neighborhood as well as funding the Priority Development Area Study. So a very important meeting, and I am hopeful and confident that my colleagues on TAM will vote yes to approve those funds. And then finally, this week, to past weekend, I know it's been mentioned, Porch Fest. I ran into the Vice Mayor there. I do need to give a big shout out to Gina Silvestri and the Gristle Park Neighborhood Association, who pulled off an amazing event between like torrential downpour and no rain. And our community was out rocking to all the different types of music. It was a fantastic event. Coastal Cleanup, in addition to McGinnis, there was one at Pickleweed. I was able to attend that. Rotarians came out as well as some high school students. So they cleaned up a lot of debris along the path. And then finally, at the same time, there was a lot going on at the Alborro Center. It was the second weekend of the new Canal FC Soccer Team. So FC stands for Football Club. I know we call it soccer here, but in the soccer world, you say FC. So the Canal FC Soccer Team for Boys and Girls aged 9 to 14. And this is a new initiative that is a joint initiative with the Voces de Canal, which is a group of the Canal Alliance, as well as the fantastic Marina, who has been driving the Little Kicker Soccer Program out there forever. And then Marin FC, so that's a very established old soccer club. So hopeful that the youth out there will have opportunities to be on the pitch, hopefully, with, as Micah was referring to, getting a new field, an all-weather field out there eventually. So I was glad it was not raining on Saturday because there were a lot of people that would have been disappointed if that had been the case. So with that, thank you all. I know that was a lot. Thank you all for listening. It's important that we do share out. We do a lot of work on the dais, but we do even more work hour-wise outside of the meeting. So that's why we take the opportunity to share what has been going on. So with that, I will open up public comment on any of the city manager's report or the city council member's report at this time. If you're in the chambers, come on down and have two minutes to share your thoughts. Not seeing anyone, I will open up to any virtual commenters.
For anyone who would like to provide public comment on Zoom, they can use the raised hand feature, or if they're calling in, they can press star nine.
This is Ava Crisanti. I wanted to note that Mike McGuire is probably familiar to a lot of people. One of the things that was revealed in one of the CPRAs, one of the many CPRAs I had to run on the City of San Rafael's creation of that very abusive police run, homeless internment camp under a freeway for a majority black and Latino population, that was actually put together by Mike McGuire and Kate Collins. I believe Damon Connolly was also involved in that. And, you know, this incident with Mateo is very much, it's a long time in the making, and it's certainly, it's such an egregious abuse of power. And yet, it's sadly, you know, far from the worst of San Rafael Police. But it's also far from the worst of Damon Connolly, who was on city council before he became a completely inept and tone-deaf supervisor, now running for State Assembly. And this is, you know, Kate Collins has played a big role. It's that camp, you know, I understand that they finally shut it down sending so many people with nowhere to go. They were camping out outside the camp because they were afraid that if they went elsewhere, they would lose contact with one another, and they could be arrested anywhere else. They were, I guess, given 72 hours until to clear out by Thursday. It's absolutely insane that you were allowed to get away with it. It's also insane that no nonprofits had the decency to speak up against this for the entire 14 months that this camp was in operation. So that is Mike McGuire's work. It's also Damon Connolly's work, and it's Kate Collins' work. Don't forget it.
I see no other hands raised, and I'll give everyone a couple moments. I see no public comment.
Thank you. I will close the public comment. And I would like to express my thanks to the interpreters that were simultaneously interpreting as we were speaking. Thank you. So the next item on our agenda is our consent calendar. Are there any items my colleagues would like to hold from the consent calendar, A through E? Nope. Okay. Not seeing any. Are there any comments from the public on the consent calendar? As I said, items A through E. Anyone in the chambers like to address the council on the consent agenda? Not seeing anyone? Is there anyone virtually who would like to comment on the consent calendar?
I see no hands raised. But if you'd like to provide public comment, you can use the raised hand feature on Zoom or press star nine, and I'll give you a couple of seconds.
Yes. You know what? We'll take virtual, and then we'll come back to this. How about that? Okay.
I see no, I see no virtual public comment.
Okay, so we will reopen it. I know the hybrid, we are very flexible here. So, yep, come on down. So this is on the consent items A through E.
I'm not sure where it belongs. That's why I didn't say anything earlier. My name is Alan Vettary. Here's a construction project for the exit from going northbound on the freeway. Here's a construction project for the exit from going northbound on the freeway. That seems to be, I'm not sure where it is. It does seem to be progressing. And it's a very uncomfortable exit that you make. And I think it's may have already contributed to people having accidents. And I'm wondering, where are we going with that? That's my only question.
Okay. Great question. So it would be fantastic if you wouldn't mind sharing your information with the city clerk so we can email you back. On the consent agenda, as it's not an item, we can't get into an in-depth discussion, but we will for sure let you know what is going on and I'll ask the assistant city manager to request the city manager at the next meeting, give an update on that Caltrans project. Talking about the 101 exit, right? Yes. Yeah. Cause I'm sure if you have the question, I'm sure others do as well. So thank you. Yeah. Thank you. Okay. Anyone else like to address us on the consent agenda? Okay. Not seen anyone. I will bring it back for a motion on consent calendar.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second. Thank you. Moved and seconded. Sorry, Madam City Clerk, we're having you multitask. Go call please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yorin Gouladi.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye. That motion carries five zero. We have two public hearing items. One is a streetery outdoor eating area ordinance. And we will start that. And I see Director Miller has joined us. I will turn it over to you. Thank you. Yep, we can see it. Yep. Thumbs up.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers for having me tonight. My name's April Miller. I'm the Director of Public Works. And there's a lot of people here in the council chambers and virtually who have contributed towards this nine department effort on the streeteries. So if there's any questions that I cannot answer, there are a lot of people here who could answer those questions. So a little bit of background. So outdoor dining has been a goal of the city since 2000, when we started doing permits for dining on sidewalks. And then in 2015, council approved a three-year pilot program for outdoor dining to allow parklets in the streets. Only one parklet was approved during that time. So in 2018, council authorized the continuation of on-street dining where three restaurants received approval. So in 2020, city council authorized an emergency measure to help businesses during COVID-19 have outdoor dining. And those permits are valid through November of 2022. So since that timeline is getting closer, in early, earlier this year, we had nine different departments meet every week to talk about the guidelines and what it would take to create streetery guidelines. We also received feedback from the Economic Development Subcommittee and partners like the Chamber of Commerce and the Downtown Business District, as well as several local restaurants. So here's a little summary of some of the outreach this year. So monthly, we provided updates and requested feedback from the Economic Development Subcommittee. There's also a task force that was created from the Subcommittee that reviewed the guidelines and this included the chamber, business district, city staff, as well, as well as some of the businesses that are on the Subcommittee. And we invited a couple of the streetery owners to talk about the guidelines. And then in May, a few additional streeteries owners were interested in the guidelines. So we met with them to talk about what recommendations they had on the guidelines. And then in June, we presented to the city council an informational report and we and the council approved these draft guidelines. Over the course of the last few months, we have snail mailed and emailed the draft guidelines multiple times about the revised program for everybody who signed up for the program of all of the, at that time, there was about 30 streeteries. And then we continued to do that over the last couple of months. And we also visited the streeteries, including dropping off, we created a one-page fact sheet that highlighted some of the dates and fees and guidelines. Since the guidelines are quite lengthy, we just want to summarize it so that we could get more people to review what we're planning on bringing to council. So today's hearing is, there's a few different things that we need to have updated. So one of them is, we're actually looking at doing a new ordinance under chapter 11, which is the Public Works section. And that will require a new encroachment permit for each restaurant's streetery. It also gives the Department of Public Works the authority and discretion for those approvals. I just wanted to clarify that as the ordinance is written in the agenda packet today, it applies equally to existing and proposed streeteries. And we've received recent feedback from streeteries requesting some flexibility and minor modifications as long as they meet the intent of the guidelines. And so if council would like to add that language, then we do have a language drafted. If you would like to add some sort of flexibility with the existing streeteries, not just have everyone follow the same guidelines. In addition, the program was also deemed exempt from CEQA. And then last week, city staff presented to the Planning Commission. And that because chapter 14, the zoning chapter is actually underneath the Planning Commission and also updating the downtown precise plan so that the outdoor dining streeteries moved under Public Works and was no longer under community development. And I have one, another clarification. So at the Planning Commission, it was said that existing streeteries would not be subject to this ordinance and guidelines. However, I'd like to correct this and say that they are not exempt. So just a few highlights of the ordinance, which can be found in the agenda packet in more detail. So there will be permits required, an annual streetery encroachment permit in order to use the parking spaces in front of the businesses for the streeteries. And this will go into effect on December 1st, 2022, assuming city council does the improvements on the schedules that we have. In addition, a building permit and fee will be required if any electrical connections for lighting. And also if a structure is over six feet tall, it will need a building permit. The ordinance also lists what types of fees and those fees we're looking at is a permit fee, an annual encroachment lease fee and a refundable one-time deposit. The specifics of the amount for these fees will be addressed at the next city council meeting when we talk about the fees and the guidelines, which will be part of a separate resolution. But since the ordinance mentions which types of fees, I wanted to list which type of fees we're looking at. There's also some location criteria, which was reviewed back in June. And then there's also some design aesthetics that are listed. And then right now they're limited to food service establishments only, these streeteries. And then there's some operational standards. For instance, you know, live music will, as it does now, will require a separate permit, not automatic with the streetery. And also accessibility requirements. So here's just a few of the items that are in the guidelines that were the same as on June 21st. So kind of the location of them, streeteries can only have two spaces per business. And then also there's a rule about 70% of the parking in specified area must be maintained. One item that we have a little bit more clarification from the June meeting is that the ordinance will not allow streeteries on roads over 25 miles an hour or on peak hour restrictions. And so that would, right now, there are four streeteries on Lincoln Avenue, all of which are in the zone of over 25 miles an hour or on a peak hour restriction. And so all of those owners have been notified of that. A little update on the current condition of the streeteries. So we've received feedback from about 60% of the 25 remaining streeteries. And feedback meaning either they're going to be part of the program, they're gonna, they're gonna remove their streetery as of November 30th. And then, so we also did just an initial analysis on how much effort it would take to meet these guidelines. So we've just ballparked on significant improvements, moderate or minimal. And so there's some percentages on what it would take to upgrade some of these streeteries. And then some of the, some of the issues that were also expressed in June is there's, for some of these streeteries, there's neglect, that it's not accessible. There's just a lack of cleaning and litter, traffic safety, and then aesthetic issues. And I do want to clarify that compliance will take time and staff will work with each restaurant owner through the permitting process to evaluate what is needed per streeter who wants to continue with this program. So here's a few key dates that we listed in our one-page handout. We gave all of the existing streeteries. So tonight, we're doing the first reading of the proposed ordinance. Then at the next council meeting to do the second and final reading of the proposed ordinance. And then at that meeting, there'll also be a review of the fees and guidelines, which will be approved of a separate resolution. Right after that date, people can start applying for permits for their streeteries. But it's not actually in effect until November 2nd. So we can't approve them until November 2nd because there needs to be 30 days from when it was approved to when they go into effect. And then on November 30th, that's the end of the prior program. So any business that choose not to participate will need to remove their structure from the public right of way. So then December 1st is when all businesses will need to have an approved streetery application, pay the fees and have an encroachment permit in place. So our recommended option to open the public hearing, receive feedback, waive further reading and introduce the ordinance chapter 1170. Make the several amendments recommended in the staff report for chapter 14 on zoning. And then also amend chapter nine of the downtown form-based code for the staff report.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Miller. Yeah, a lot of work has gone into this. We still might have some questions though. I'll start with the vice mayor. Questions on this program?
I don't think, no questions right now.
We'll definitely have comments as well. Councilmember Bushy.
One question. What is your plan for enforcement? If come December 1st, there's not an application and there's still streetery materials in the public right of way?
Yeah, we've been working with code enforcement. So we're going to follow our MUDI code with posting on the streeteries. And there's a certain timeframe and then we can post again. And then at a certain point, we're allowed to remove it out of the public right of way ourselves.
So you'll follow the usual tagging process. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Yorin Gouladi.
Thank you. I'm assuming when we are mentioning like 75% parking within the three blocks, that will also include like our existing parking buildings as potential places to park? Or is it street parking? I don't know. I'm just wondering.
I know Victoria Lim, who's worked on this in the Economic Development Department is here as well. I can see you moving down if you want to help answer that question. That's an excellent question. And Victoria, thank you for being here and all the work that you've done.
Good evening, Mayor Kate, councilmembers. The answer to that question is yes, it includes the parking garages. When you make that calculation within the three block radius, but for the one block, it's just the on-street. The 70% for one block.
Okay, thank you. No further questions. Look forward to hearing from the community.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. And thank you, Director Miller, for the report. I had a few questions. In the staff report, it indicates an estimated six streeteries would probably, or businesses would participate in the early removal program. Can you update if that number is accurate or how they're indicating a firm commitment to that removal, participating in that $1,500 subsidy?
Yeah, that's our estimated number. We have heard from a few locations. For instance, Libation has a second streetery and they asked to keep it in business or keep it operational until after dining under the lights. So we're waiting until that happens. And then we've received a few others who are interested, but we have, right now, we don't have commitments on who would like us to remove it for them.
Thank you. I have a question on the compliance process. I appreciated the opportunity for you to provide additional time as folks work. Obviously, if it's multiple years, that's probably too long. What do we think is a reasonable timeframe to work through compliance issues?
Yeah, I guess we haven't assessed what is a reasonable amount of time. I'll get Rafat's on too, for any questions. But yeah, so we haven't determined that. We're hoping that since it's supposed to go into place on December 1st, that we'll at least have people who filled out application and are starting the process with us.
Thank you. Those are my questions.
Thank you. And I see that Rafat Ray has joined us as well, our traffic engineer. So thank you. We have all the right people to answer any questions. So thank you for being here. I don't have any myself, but I know the vice mayor has one. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you. I do have a question in terms of a new restaurant. So when a new restaurant comes in as part of their building permit request, does it include the option to allow for a streetery?
It'd be a separate permit. So yes, new businesses can, or new restaurants or even existing restaurants can all follow the guidelines that will hopefully be approved next council meeting. So it'd be a separate, it'd be a separate building permit because it's associated with this encroachment permit.
Do we indicate that based on their current location, they could be applicable for having an out, a streetery? So because of the regulation around the parking, the regulation, because they're coming in at the end, right? So the existing restaurants are having sort of first dibs in terms of setting up a streetery, which would then preclude potentially a new restaurant?
Yeah, so it's a, it is a new encroachment permit. So yeah, I guess the people who have existing ones do have a leg up since they've heard about it more recently likely. But yeah, I guess we haven't discussed whether or not it could be part of the building permit application. But if somebody asks us, we could do that assessment, whether or not it could be at that time.
I think that'd be great. Thank you. Victoria, did you want to add to that?
Reading body language. It's so nice to be in person because it's much harder to do on Sam.
Director Miller described it really well, but I just wanted to add that as we were walking around the downtown streets and visiting businesses, the good news is that there are new restaurants coming in. There's a La Ushun restaurant that's about to open right next to Vin Antico. Vin Antico, the owner, when I spoke to her, said that Vin Antico had generously given her part of their structure that's in front of her restaurant to use until the end of the current temporary program. And so she, as a new owner, I asked her if she was interested in applying. She is not, but she also happens to be the owner of Betai that shares one streetery with wrap and kebab. And so that those partners would like to apply and they're very interested in working with the Department of Public Works to apply for the new program. And so we have some who are very interested and some who have decided that as part of their business, it does not make sense for them. I understand the gist of your question. Is it unfair to new business owners because the existing ones already have a streetery? That's why we're asking all of the business owners to submit an application. So fairness has definitely been a part of our consideration, making sure that we're considering not only existing business owners as well as new business owners and giving everyone a fair chance to apply. Of course, existing ones are already there. You know, they have a leg up in terms of building the actual structure. But I think we've really been thoughtful about ensuring fairness as well as safety and aesthetics.
Great. Thank you.
Victoria, before you go, because you said something that was interesting and that was two restaurants sharing a similar streetery. So do you feel that the program as written has the flexibility that those costs can be shared or the liability, whatever it is?
Right. So it was an interesting setup. I think we might want to add more language. This conversation actually occurred today because I was just walking around trying to make sure that everyone knew about the council meeting this evening. So she mentioned that they are planning to apply jointly. We don't have enough language in We don't have enough language in the current guidelines to address that, their specific situation, because she's planning to, I don't believe that they have a legal agreement set up. They're currently sharing, so they have no legal agreement. And there are no fees, so they're not paying anything. So that would definitely have to be addressed in our guidelines to make sure that, if, for example, a business owner leaves, and what happens to that structure? So yes, definitely, Mayor Kate, we would need to be a little bit more thorough in the guidelines with respect to that situation.
Okay, that's really helpful. City attorney, I'm curious, in terms of being that we might want to add language that would be substantive around a sharing of a streetery, is, how does that work into the, this is the first reading? I know we're going to receive public comment, so there might be additional changes, but...
Right, we're able to make any changes that you wish tonight. It's at the second reading that we can only make changes that are, you know, like a typographical error or something like that. So if there's a motion at the dais for the additional language that the Public Works Director mentioned earlier, or this other idea that's being discussed now, we just need to clarify it. So staff's able to memorialize it when we return with the ordinance at the next meeting for adoption.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted that clarity. Thank you, Victoria. Okay, with that, we will open the public comment on this item. So if you're interested and you're in the chamber, come on down and share your thoughts. If you would, if you're comfortable, we'd love to know who you are and if you're associated with the business, if that's something you want to share.
Yes, I do. This is Srinath from Lotus Restaurant. I don't know if you can hear me or not. I just got this one today regarding what's going on regarding the parklet, I just took our parklet, or the streetery. They're saying they're gonna remove the side of the drums, the one on the side, on the both side. And if they're gonna be removing that, I heard they're gonna put like the stop of the car, the small beams, and that's gonna roll over, and that's gonna create a problem because we already got hurt twice or three times, somebody bumping back. So if you're gonna remove something solid and put something minor, that's gonna create a problem with the structure. That was the concern. And also, I was thinking if allowing doing that, why don't you offer the people, or you can allow to build it permanently? It's not like the structure, like the city, the other restaurants, some like, there is a bar on the 4th Street, right next to the Mai Tai restaurant. They have, you know, done, why don't the city think about that, allowing it if you can allow it? If somebody can be able to afford it, you should be able to allow and start having it, building it. Now we build, we spent about a $15,000 putting in. I don't know if the city's gonna be satisfied or not. So that is, that was my concern. And also, I think one time you should have an agenda for all the restaurant owners who come from the city council, have their view, because nobody gets a chance to come, and nobody has the time. So I think if there is one specific day before you implement all these rules and regulations, everybody should give them one opportunity to come. So it just only be agenda for the restaurant, street eating or not. I think that will make a lot more sense, in my view. And I think the fee is, I feel a little bit more higher also, the fees you're trying to collect, $3,600 or whatnot. The people are, we, even though we have a big restaurant, people still like to sit outside. They're still worried, they're still wearing the mask, they still want to come sit outside. So I think we're collecting the double amount of money. We, as owners, we collecting the money from them, and we, you're collecting the money, and I think it's kind, there's, some has to be common, common ground on, on, on the customers' base. Why should they come and sign a trial? They have a salicyated restaurant, they're driving down here, then they're gonna pay for the parking, or they're gonna, vice versa. I think there's some kind of, if you want to make a 4th Street as the attraction, then there should be something incentive or something has to given. Not just keep coming with the taxes or something to hammer the restaurant owners.
Thank you, Srinath.
Okay, I think I'm done.
No, and your questions, just so you know, I'm noting them, and we will answer all of them. And yeah. Anyone else in the chambers? Yeah, come on down.
Hello, I'm Ryan with Libation. Trying to get this all in two minutes. So I'm hoping that we can have some consideration for the hardships that we're all still experiencing and hospitality. You know, last year was even worse than 2020. Our revenues were only about 50% of our 2019 numbers. Things are getting a little bit better as people are starting to go out, but they're not going out the way that they were in 2019, and we're still struggling, not to mention hundreds of thousands of dollars in debt from trying to get through the pandemic through loans with the government that are coming, starting to come due here, coming months. Additionally, being one of the businesses that was approved prior to this all happening, I'm hoping that there's some consideration for existing businesses in that we've already gone through the permitting, planning department, building department, getting these approvals. And, you know, went through a lot of time getting structures in place that at the time, there was no talk about there being annual fees going into these. So I, we've got an 1896 building. I constructed it to look like a porch that extended off of this beautiful building. It was $36,000. If I knew I was gonna lose it in three years or have to start paying, essentially, it's looking like $11,200 between the permit fee, the annual two parking space fee, and the $2,000 deposit. Would not have spent that kind of money and would have kind of put together some of the half, you know, made structures that you're seeing a lot on 4th Street. So I'm hoping there's some consideration with that on some of the existing structure. I do have an idea with the $2,000 per fee you're looking for, for compliance, a bond might be a better way that you can still go what you're looking for from the businesses, but it allows us a much more affordable option to comply. And then I am just curious as well, with these fees, if we do end up having to have new encroachment permits, as the city is, you know, keeping care of your parking meters and your parking spaces, are you going to be helping with things like in particular on B Street? We're dealing with a lot of cleanup and vandalism maintenance from the transients in our area. Is that something the city is going to help us with when we've got excrement on our parklet that we're looking to clean up? And then I'm also just curious if we can, what the fees are with the bulbs? So as a part of that earlier program, you've got bulbs and several businesses. Are those going to be in line, or the fees that we're looking to do for the parklet's going to be in line with what the bulbs are paying? My time, thank you.
Thank you. And you're saying, you meant the bulbouts, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, so like Subor, Fluffle Hut, Staterum, essentially the same concept of taking over parking spaces.
Right, those are just, yeah, okay, we got your question. I should thank you, sure. I understood. Thank you. Anyone else in the chambers before we go to virtual? See Adam.
My name is Adam Vialanti, and I own the Pine Size Lounge. And a couple of things I came to talk about. One of them was shared parklet because the one, as you know, in front of my business, I built for three businesses, and they're all attached. It's basically one structure. So I don't know if I can be a part of that conversation and how to share. And, you know, we, there's two property owners and three locations. So there's a few things I'd like to discuss, maybe on the one-on-one or in a group concerning that. The other one was, you know, like Ryan said, we're, we're still in a hardship in our, in our industry. We're not even close. I'm operating at about 65%. And we're basically coming into winter time, which is not our best time. So it's, it's a big ask to come up with this kind of money. So I'm looking for some sort of pricing structure, or some sort of, some sort of plan that we can stretch out some of those fees over a little bit of time. I think it's pretty fair what you're asking, but I just think it's a lot to ask maybe all at once. So. And that's pretty much it. There is one other thing on the diagram of the parklet or streetery, whatever you want to call it. I think the hash marks for the spark, the parking spots that delineate, I think you have them backwards, and you might want to check that. I could be wrong, but I can show you what I mean. And it actually makes a pretty big difference on the math if people have to alter them. Correct.
Apologies, you mean the Ts and the Ls?
Correct. I think they're upside down. I hope they're upside down, otherwise I have a major modification.
Okay.
Yeah. Anyway, that's pretty much it.
Thank you.
Thank you. We hadn't thought about having three businesses in a parklet, so we are a streetery. So definitely would love your insight on that. Anyone else in the chambers? Okay, not seeing anyone on this item. Is there anyone virtually who would like to comment on the streetery program?
For anyone who'd like to provide public comments through Zoom, you can use the raise hand feature, and if you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hand. I see no public comments right now, and I'll give everyone just a couple of seconds. I see no public comment.
Thank you. I will close the public comment, and I'll run through the questions I have, and I will answer those, and if I missed any. So in no particular order, the idea of a bond for security instead, the role of a, or the fairness of bulbouts versus streeteries, permanent barriers, changing them from what they exist now to something maybe less rigid, I guess? I'm not quite sure, but we understand what Srinath was trying to ask. The fees, and I know where the fees are going to be talked about the next meeting, but I do think it's worth talking about. We'll probably have Victoria come up and talk about, because we had a lot of discussion about fees, but about phasing them, subsidies, everything around that concept. Who does the maintenance for a parklet was asked? And then, and the shared parklet was the last one. So let's go on these, and then we'll add them.
That we're, that came through public.
Okay.
The community outreach piece and having a conversation. And I thought that was, that had happened, but I wasn't quite sure. The formal structure, the guidelines, again, I think that was also part of the current process. I'm not sure if there was anything, I think that was it.
Okay. So yeah, and you can reference the many economic development subcommittee meetings where we talked about this. Okay, so with that, and take it away, Director Miller, and we know Victoria's here as well.
Yeah, there's several things that are going to require other people to discuss this. I guess Rafat, if you're there, if you want to talk about the permanent barriers versus the wheel stops?
I'll be happy to do so. I think the, good evening, Mayor Kate, members of the city council. Thanks for accommodating me remotely. The, we feel that the guidelines that we presented on 621 are safe enough for traffic. We excluded anything over 25 miles an hour. In the standards we have, in the ordinance and in the guidelines, we have wheel stops that will prevent the runover, runover at a very low speed. And we will always do a traffic check to make sure that the streeteries are safe for higher speed as well. Would you like me to go on, talking about the fees phasing and flexibility?
But before you do that, I think part of the question was when people who are not good parkers back into the streetery? Will the current barriers prevent that?
The current barriers, the big barrels, are definitely a more solid structure to bump into, but we have wheel stops that would stop the vehicle before it bumps into any physical part of the streetery. And, and we feel that this is, this is safe enough. If we have a specific parking space that is difficult, or, you know, we know, and we will be interacting with owners individually, if, if they have specific concerns or that they've experienced things specifically, the discretion of the director is given by the city council, and we will work with them on maybe beefing up the, the stop bar, the stop bar, or the wheel stop, or maybe putting double wheel stops. We will, we will be working with them on, on ensuring the safety.
Thank you. So yes, you want to, you want to talk about the fees?
I want to talk to, about the fee, and I would like to talk about more than one owner sharing a streetery as well. But in the fee schedule that we will bring back to you next, next time, the council already directed staff to recognize the economic hardship that the restaurants are facing. And the, the current proposal that we haven't presented to you includes a one-year of free rental fee, and the second year to be at 50%, and that is a significant incentive and a, you know, that we will consider at, at the next meeting. The fees were compared, and we will discuss it at the next meeting, the fees were compared with other agencies. And I think business owners, it may sound, may look like it's a, it's a chunk of money to pay, but the first year, they'll be paying the 2,000 deposit, and they will be waived from the city's 600 per space. And, you know, that there will be a, an approval, like a permit approval fee that city staff will take to make sure that all of the safety elements have been checked. So there, there are flexibility, and we will bring you more flexibility. I mean, that was the council direction, is to give the first year for free and the, the second year at 50%. So there's a, almost a two and a half, three years recovery period for the owners to recover from paying the full amount. As far as one more, more than one owner, you know, as an operator in public works, I, I feel that it's, it's a much better arrangement to be dealing with one owner. And if we add language to the ordinance, it would be to allow other to sublease. Because we want to have one insurance, one personal party, and if they feel that they want to have any private agreement on shared use, they can, they can use the space because actually, they are renting public space, and they can do, and they can sublease that space, making sure that the rules of engagement are still intact, and the streetery still meets ADA's, meets the safety standards, it meets the pedestrian passage standards, and all of the guideline items that we mentioned.
Thank you. That is very helpful. Okay, so where are we on the questions? Talking about bulbouts versus non-bulbouts, that's like Director Judasee. We are touching all departments. So when we say that there were nine different departments that developed this program, we meant it.
Yeah, this has definitely been a team, team effort. So bulbouts and the parklets structures are definitely two different types of outdoor dining. The bulbouts include, have included in some cases, expansion of the sidewalk area. Removal, you know, if, if it became, like if a restaurant closed doors or decided not to provide the outdoor parking anymore, removal would essentially consist of, you know, taking out the surrounding gates and, or sorry, fences that they install. It's not as heavy a lift for staff. That said, the existing license agreements do require that the business owners reimburse the city for any costs associated with removal. So there is some language in the license agreement that requires compensation for the removal. Removal of a parklet structure is quite a bigger lift, and so it's important to assure that we are going to be reimbursed or relying on, you know, the idea that a business owner may or may not reimburse the city once they've gone gets a little bit more tricky, and so it's important to establish a, some sort of a deposit amount earlier in the process rather than after, after a business owner has moved. I think that was the crux of the question on bulbouts.
Yeah, and I think there might just be an inherent baked-in unfairness in that the bulbouts, I think, were built into the city. I don't know when they were put in, in the 50s, and now we're trying to deal with a situation here today of adding additional capacity.
That's correct, and they're, you know, they're installed. There's, it's, it's a, it's a, the bulbouts actually do provide a access point. So if they weren't used anymore, there's some, that's something that the pedestrians could continue to use. That's not the case for parklets.
Well, it's interesting, and maybe after the streeteries are up and running, we see how they work. And who says that we can't add additional bulbouts? I think we need to see how this program works and how downtown gets revitalized, but that's an interesting, interesting idea. Okay, actually, on the bond for security, you did mention on the, I thought that was an interesting idea, that that was something that could be done versus...
Yeah, we have required bonds in the past, and we can evaluate that further prior to coming back.
Yeah, I think that's a great suggestion. Thank you. And then the last question was really, who does the maintenance? And I would expand that to say the liability. So if a restaurant owner has created a parklet, the maintenance liability, where, how does that delineate it?
Yeah, the maintenance and the liability, per the agreements that would be signed with the city, would be the business owner.
Okay. Victoria.
Yes. Just wanted to clarify, I wasn't sure if the council quite understood what surrender, who goes by Paul, had said. I actually met with his son, the manager at the restaurant, and they were mentioning that Paul was actually invited by the Chamber of Commerce to join and participate and provide feedback in the May task force that convened. The Economic Development Subcommittee back in April had suggested that we convene a task force consisting of members of the Chamber of Commerce, Board of Directors for the Chamber, as well as the Downtown Business Improvement District and their board. So we held a over two hour task force meeting where they reviewed the draft guidelines, which were substantially the same as the ones that you reviewed back in June. Aroma and Lotus, Paul is the owner of Lotus, were cited by the chamber as being aesthetically pleasing and were hopeful that other structures in San Rafael could resemble, not be exactly the same, but resemble something that had that kind of aesthetic vibe. And so that, I believe that was one of the reasons why the chamber invited them to participate. One of the things that they pointed out was a hardship for them that Paul also mentioned again today is the side setbacks. So I think that's what he was referring to because the current guidelines require us to put in wheel stops at the edge of the parking spaces and then a two feet distance from the edge of the structure. So that when the wheel hits the wheel stop, it doesn't crash into the actual structure. Financially, if we ask the existing businesses who've built structures to move them, it does actually cause them financial hardship to have to move those. So that's what they were pointing out, what's, that's what Paul was pointing out. I wasn't quite sure if that was made clear. So I just wanted to clarify that.
So, so to clarify, with those wheel stops, existing structures would need to move to accommodate those?
Correct. So structures like kitchen table, like Aroma, like Lotus, like Libations, Ryan spoke earlier. They all come to the edge of the parking space.
Right.
So that's something for us to consider. It's feedback that we've gotten subsequent to the June meeting as we engage with the community and ask them for feedback. And specifically each business, as we engage with each business and trying to get feedback from them.
That's really helpful. And I know it is either a question for Director Miller or Rafat. So if we were trying to get additional space and not have them move, are the parking, the length of a parking spot, is that defined by a highway code? Or do we have a little bit of a latitude there for our downtown parallel parking spaces?
We do have a little bit of latitude and that would be the first thing that we would do to try to accommodate that encroachment. You know, we can, we can change the Ts and Ls, we can change the location of the parking meter and we can, you know, subdivide the, the area for the parking space. We can work with that and if we can, if we can't, maybe we can come up with more creative solutions other than the wheel stops. The wheel stops is, is something that we would put to try to prevent, you know, running over into the structure itself. But if, if we can do it in any other way, we will, we will try to do it. And that's where the latitude that's giving to the director will come into, will come into play.
Thank you.
It, it's going to take a lot of case to, you know, case, case, on a, you know, case to case basis to get it.
No, your point's well taken and that is why many jurisdictions or some jurisdictions in Marin County are actually completely eliminating their streetery program because it does come down to restaurant by restaurant. And San Rafael has showed a continued commitment to enliven our downtown. So we are not taking that route. And actually, incidentally, when I talked about going to that mayor's conference throughout the nation, many, many cities are actually just removing them because it is very complicated and there are a lot of different aspects. So, so just hats off to staff for all the work that they've done and to our restaurant community for providing the input as we go forward. So I will ask my fellow colleagues, they can ask additional questions and then comments at the same time. So if that's okay, or do you have a?
No, I noted one more inquiry.
Okay.
Which was a specific request for B Street cleanup.
Well, the way that I translated that was around parklet maintenance and liability. And so I think for each, the parklets themselves are responsible for their streetery. Can use a new word. I think for the street itself, it would fall under the same umbrella that we have for downtown cleaning, be it in a doorway or be it in a street.
Thank you.
Okay. So Vice Mayor Kurtz.
Sort of one more clarification on, on a piece. The deposit, I think I heard Director Judas C. talk about it's a deposit for removal. It's a removal deposit. Is that correct?
There's a, there's a few different things. So it, the deposit is also if a business does not pay their fees for the next year, it can be taken out of that deposit.
Ah, okay. Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead and do comments.
Okay, thank you. This is huge. I mean, a number of projects that I work on, we always call it areas of interest. And who would be interested? And it's clear that this one, everyone was interested in. And it's areas of interest and in areas of impact. And you wouldn't think just creating a streetery or creating, you know, outside eating has such a significant impact and it really does. And you can see just based on the level of conversation, the level of detail and the level of energy within the community, how passionate people are around this issue. So huge round of thanks to everyone working on this. Looking forward to seeing it come back. I think the feedback that we received tonight was very helpful. And I, I think there's some good ideas there, but we're, it feels like it's like ninety percent there. And so, and I know it's been a long time in coming because when we first went out with the idea during COVID, it was what can we do? And now to actually formalize this, and I, I have been reading about other communities and how difficult it is to the point where they just say, we're done. We can't figure it out. So huge kudos to the group for trying to work through this and the, the issue of adjusting and adjusting and adjusting. And we may still need to adjust as we go through. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bushy.
Great program. Totally stoked to move forward with, with this. I think it adds a lot to, to our community and I really appreciate all the detail that went into putting it together. I wish that detail had included the fee structure though, so that we could have this together. Because that is, that, that seems to be what most of the comments are about. So conceptually, we're going to adopt, we have two readings of an ordinance and then the fee structure, will that be an ordinance as well? So it will take two readings?
No, the fees will be a resolution.
Just a resolution.
And the fees were in the draft guidelines in June, the structure of those.
Okay, so you're going to stay with those amounts?
Well, we're, we're listening to feedback, but yeah.
Okay, okay, all right. So you're hearing that, the, the, the feedback. So if you're listening for feedback, the idea of the first year being free, while I agree with the sort of transitioning things in, free might be, zero might be too low. Maybe it's ten percent or twenty-five percent or something like that. So there's a, a little skin in the game on, on this operation. And, and also the sort of sharing the space, coming up with rules that would make that work. Because we, we want to be as cooperative as we can to make this as efficient for our restaurant owners.
Thank you. And I see, Victoria, did you want to speak on the, the fees? Because we did, that was discussed a lot by the chamber and the BID and the restaurants. Yeah.
I think the June version that we presented to you had a wave, a waiver of the application fee for the first year. I'm just clarifying. And the first year for the annual rental fee, I believe, is what you're referring to, Councilmember Bushy. We had proposed a fifty percent discount and the second year was a twenty-five percent discount. So there's three separate items. The first is the application fee, which staff had proposed to waive for the first calendar year. So from December first, twenty twenty-two to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. And for the annual space rental per parking space, we had proposed to discount it by fifty percent for that same time period. And then a, discount it by twenty-five percent from January first, twenty twenty-four to the end of that calendar year. That was what we proposed in June.
And, and that's great. It just would have been nice to be part of this package so that we could see everything together and then all the restaurant owners could come in and, and, and comment on it. And we could maybe come up with creative ways to address their issues by reconfiguring some of the fees.
I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood the way it had proposed in June. I just wanted to clarify because we didn't change that in June and the current staff report.
Right.
Okay, but thank you. Thank you, Victoria. Councilmember Micah.
Yeah, thank you. I actually have a follow-up question. When you have the fees, do you have to pay the full amount of the fees in December? Or can you stagger it through the year? Like the payments?
We, the intent was for people to pay for the fees upfront, but that we could consider that feedback and bring that next council meeting.
I mean, I, I wonder if it makes a difference or not. I know in the restaurant business, sometimes the holidays are a big month. And maybe January is better or maybe it's easier if you just can set up like a year. I don't know. It would be interesting to hear maybe from the restaurants. I have a question about, you know, I'm still going with the seventy-five percent parking. And where I'm coming from, I had, I was a co-owner of a restaurant Sabado Spain in two thousand and four or five. So if you see three tables with an iron gate that was like really trying to have outdoor seating. So I feel very passionate about the street areas and I think it's amazing for restaurants and it also adds a lot of vitality to downtown. So when I'm thinking about between A and, and B Street, seventy-five percent of parking, because there's not a lot of parking there between, you know, the theater and, you know, ADA's and all these things. How do you count like within one block? And I guess my question comes to, I just want to make sure that we are also inviting to new businesses that they might want to come with a streetery. And maybe is, there's not seventy-five percent of the parking and how do I address that? Can we make like exceptions? How do we go around that?
The way the guidance, or the ordinance is currently written, there is not room for that flexibility on the seventy percent? Yeah, Jennifer.
Because we haven't heard from the city attorney department in this presentation. Thank you, Assistant City Attorney. We want all nine departments. No, thank you.
I think this is somewhere where I can add some detail. So the provision in the ordinance now is that the parking will be seventy-five percent based on a three block average, not a one block average. And otherwise, the director can also consider parking garages in the nearby area as part of that. And then I also want to add that there is a catchall discretion provision in the ordinance, which allows the director to issue a streetery encroachment permits if she finds that a streetery cannot meet the strict standards. However, the streetery as proposed does not present any public health, welfare, traffic concerns, safety concerns, et cetera. So there is some flexibility to authorize streeteries even if they don't meet those strict standards. So I hope that helps understand the, the parking issue.
Yeah, no, I think that's actually very helpful to know that there is a tiny bit of flexibility there. So, great. Thank you. I know I made a question on purpose as you could. So, so yeah, I think, I think that covers all my questions. And again, I'm, I'm super excited. I know this was like a tremendous work between the city, the chamber, the BID, the restaurants. And I'm, I'm super excited. To me, it's the silver lining of COVID is to be able to have this in San Rafael. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Director Miller, again for your report and taking, and all department folks for taking questions. I just wanted to thank all the folks who came out to provide testimony on the impacts. I, I think we've captured amendments that we're going to examine specifically the consideration for the two K bond consideration as well as the staggering of fees. I really support that. And yeah, those are my comments, but thank you, everyone involved, including the community. A lot of different inputs to make sure we arrive that as close to balanced as we can as we're coming out. And hopefully, if we don't get it right this time, as already mentioned, we'll continue to adjust. Thanks.
Thank you. And I'll, I'll build on your comments. It, it is a balance. One thing that we hear and we didn't hear today, tonight in the room is the lack of parking in downtown. So there's a very loud voice around that, a loud conversation. We have done parking studies. So this is that balance and parking, let's, to be clear, parking is a public amenity. So the fees that are associated is because we are renting or, well, renting, sharing. And when you say we're giving away, because it's actually the city's being compensated of a public amenity. So I want, I want to be clear, that's why the fees have been generated and where that is coming from. And I also concur with my colleagues. Thank you to staff for working on this. And I do, I think the only people that didn't weigh in was SRPD and SRFD. And let me tell you, they also worked on it because there were issues in their departments as well to make sure that it worked, as well as the restaurants. And we do understand, thank you for your testimony. We understand that parklets were a, I don't know, a lifeline, a tiny lifeline, but a lifeline for the businesses over the last couple of years. And I agree with Councilmember Mike. I love the vitality that they bring. This has been a program that the entire council has really wanted and supported. And if we need to tinker with it as it goes forward, that may be. But I think it shows well and clear that we want an activated downtown. And by the way, street areas can be in other parts of San Rafael as well, not just in the downtown. It can be up in East San Rafael, up in Terolinda. So, so thank you for your patience. As we brought this forward, we knew that the deadline was coming with November and the one thing we didn't want to do was to leave everyone hanging and not sure what was going to happen next. So to your point, if the fees and everything weren't all packaged up, we had talked about it in June and that will still be finalized in October, but we really did want to move that forward. So with that, I know, Mary Beth, I don't know if you were taking notes, but Director Miller had suggested some amendments. It's always complicated when that happens because we want to make sure we get it right to the ordinance. I don't know if you want to repeat it or how we can, go ahead, Assistant City Manager.
Did you have time in here? On the, on the, where two people or two businesses want to share, I think that my read, and I was conferring with the city attorney here, that Rafat's comments about there would be one business owner would sponsor the, the application and then there would be a sublease or the, the two business owners could work it on their own just so that one person or one business is solely responsible for the liability and maintenance. So I don't see that there's a need for any sort of ordinance amendment for that. It's more process administrative behind the scenes. They could come forward together, but we would have one business owner be the named applicant.
So on that, because we want to have a sidebar, if you could pick Adam's brain on that because he did experience just, I, I concur with what Rafat said, but we'd love to have any learning from the real world as this goes forward. So that, but, but we know from the city attorney, that's something that can be brought forward at the next reading as well, anything that's changed. But there were some, weren't there some corrections? Okay.
So if we want to make any changes, we should make them tonight. The next meeting, it's only like a grammatical or a spelling.
No, I understand that, but I'm, I'm saying for the shared, we're, we're going to put in language that address shared spaces, streeteries. And we're putting it in staff's hand to either, the single lease makes a lot of sense. We're nodding our heads and there might be real life experience that Adam could provide. So that's what we're saying. We're saying, yes, please put in that additional language. We are, right?
We're, we're suggesting no additional language is needed.
No, but, well, but we need to call out, we need to be very specific about the shared streeteries. I mean, Victoria had said that it's not called out the way it should be. I think we need to actually.
I'm going to defer to the Assistant City Attorney on this.
So the, the way the ordinance is structured now is that the applicant must be operating the business that is adjacent to the parking spaces. And that business can have up to two parking spaces. So if that business owner wanted to, for example, share with a neighboring business to use that, I don't see that the ordinance would need to be modified because that business owner is still running their streetery adjacent to their business. I think potentially where it might get into an issue is if somebody wanted like perhaps more than two parking spaces for a larger one. That would be an area that I think there, we might run into an issue with the way this is written if we still only had that one business owner.
I think we just want to make sure there's clarity. I mean, Victoria, who knows this better than anyone in San Rafael. When I hear you say that we could provide additional clarity, however that looks, maybe it's not change in the ordinance, but however we can have that additional clarity around the shared, that resonates with me.
I, I, I think.
I uh would expect when we do the resolution, adopt policies on this, we can contemplate all the possibilities for sharing and uh provide direction to the community about how that's going to work if somebody wants to do that.
Perfect. Okay.
Yeah, I, I think so too.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Genevieve. Thank you, Rob. Yes, Director Miller, there was something you had said during your, I thought, during your presentation or not?
Yeah, no, I did. And I was saying, based on the feedback that we've received, if council would like to add language that, that provides flexibility and minor modifications to the to the guidelines for existing streeteries, then we do have some language that, that we could provide.
Yeah. So I will look down and see, just nod your head if that we'd like that. See it to my left, my right. Yes, there are a lot of head nodding, very official. Yes, head nodding. We would like to have that flexibility added. Okay?
Okay, so I will go ahead and read our proposed language.
Okay.
Get it in the record.
Can you maybe put the mic a little closer to you?
I will do that.
Thank you.
Okay, so section eleven point seven zero point zero eight zero, which is criteria for issuance. Subpart C will be revised as follows. The term for proposed streeteries will be added after deviations from adopted standards. And then a new subpart D will be added to section eleven point seven zero point zero eight zero. And that subsection will read as follows. Deviations from adopted standards for existing streeteries, period. For existing streeteries operating as of the effective date of this ordinance, comma, where the director determines that the streetery will not be detrimental to the health, comma, safety, comma, peace, comma, morals, comma, comfort or general welfare of persons residing or working in the neighborhood or injurious to property and improvements in the neighborhood, comma. The director may grant exceptions or minor modifications to the standards set forth in this chapter, period.
Thank you. None of us are going to disagree with anything you just said. Well done. Thank you for writing that ahead of time.
Learning how to do it from our clerk. She's, she's a girl.
And, and as you were saying that, I was looking at the paragraph that says ordinance. She's nodding her head. Madam City Clerk is saying, yes, for a motion, we need to have, in addition to that amendment. Someone read this. Where's their reading glasses on?
I'll be reading, but just to clarify, um, the motion would be to introduce the ordinance by title only and waive further reading of the ordinance with modifications read by the Assistant City Attorney. Is that?
Yeah, so is that, is that the motion? Okay. Okay. You can just say so moved. Everyone wants to do that.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, and you will read it?
And I get to read it.
Okay.
I get to read it.
Okay.
Uh, an ordinance adding chap- chap- chapter eleven point seven zero, streeteries, outdoor eating areas to Title XI Public Works of the San Rafael Municipal Code, amending section fourteen point sixteen point two seven seven of Chapter fourteen point sixteen, site use and regulations. Section fourteen point seventeen point one one zero of Chapter fourteen point seventeen, performance standards. Section fourteen point oh five point oh two oh of Chapter fourteen point, point oh five, commercial and office districts. Section hmm, fourteen point oh six point oh two oh of Chapter fourteen point oh six, industrial districts and section fourteen point oh eight point oh two oh of Chapter fourteen point oh eight, Marine District of Title fourteen zoning of the San Rafael Municipal Code, and amending table two point three point oh seven oh point A, use table of Chapter nine, Downtown Form Based Code of the, of the Downtown San Rafael Precise Plan relating to outdoor eating areas in the public right of way.
Thank you. We'll call for the roll.
Oh, that's me too.
Yeah, it's you too.
Uh, Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yorn Scalotti.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries five zero. Thank you to all, because I think everybody in this room helped in one way, shape or form create this. So thank you. The next uh public hearing and final item of our agenda is a board and commission update, which I actually, it's with the Madam City Clerk again, I think, right? Yes, she is getting ready.
That is true.
Okay.
Okay, uh, good evening, Mayor Kate and members of the city council. My name is El Delara. I'm the city clerk for San Rafael, and this evening we'll be discussing boards and commissions updates. Um, I'm going to go pretty quick. I was planning a pretty quick presentation based off this evening's agenda. And now it's getting a little late. So some background is that this has been a really collaborative process between all staff liaisons for our boards and commissions. And back in June, I brought a uh updates and staff approved them for, or city council approved them for the Planning Commission, Parking Recreation Commission, and the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. And just last meeting early in September was, the Oversight Committee consolidation was approved and that consolidated all of our oversight committees into one voter approved tax oversight committee, which I wanted to announce because we are currently recruiting for vacancies on that board. So if you're interested in applying, you can do so at www dot city of San Rafael dot org slash boards dash commissions. Um, and you can also subscribe to be notified of any vacancies. But this will be the final round of updates to individual boards and commissions. And this evening, we're going to be discussing Board of Library Trustees, Designer Review Board, and Fire Commission. This will be a quick summary because a lot of these changes are not, um, they're more administrative. They're just getting us to have consistency within our bylaws and not much substantive changes are being recommended. So I'm trying to, let's see here if I can move the dial box. Okay, so at present, there is a requirement in, in the ordinances for the Board of Library Trustees and the Fire Commission. There's a requirement to serve without compensation, which is set by the municipal code. Staff is proposing to provide authority to the city council to approve compensation of board members by resolution and if they were to ever choose to do so in the future. At present, in the ordinances, there's, it, it's the board's duty to review, comment, and recommend department operating budgets for the Board of Library Trustees ordinances and the Fire Commission's ordinance. So staff is recommending to remove the studie as it's the function of the San Rafael City Council. The term of office and removal of board members, that's in all of the boards' ordinances that are being discussed tonight, and we're recommending deleting that. It is duplicative as it's in our charter. Masculine language is, is throughout our municipal code, but in these three boards, and so we're recommending gender neutral language. Membership and powers and duties. This is specific to the Designer Review Board. We're recommending this be moved to section two point one sixteen point one two oh. If you don't know, two point sixteen point one two oh off the top of your head, that's our boards and commission section. So we're just trying to get everything in the right place instead of having that be in some environmental use section. That way it'll be easy for everyone to be able to find. Uh, membership, term of office, removal or vacancy of membership, meetings, uh quorum and compensation, specific to the Designer Review Board. And I have highlighted quorum there because, and I'll comment to that in a second. But we're recommending that that be deleted from the municipal code as it will be adopted um by, in the bylaws or through the resolution in the bylaws. However, quorum is highlighted there because quorum is not consistent with any of our formats for bylaws. So in a future city council meeting, we are planning to bring a handbook for boards and commissions. It's a boards and commissions policy. So a part of that will be quorum for all of our boards and commissions. Right now, the Designer Review Board is the only board that lists a quorum. So we're just removing that, but it'll come back. And I really want to make sure that it's not, um, it's to be understood that the quorum will remain the same for the Designer Review Board until it, it comes back to the city council, which is three members of the Designer Review Board constitutes a quorum. And so for the resolution and bylaw inclusions, a lot of what was in our ordinances previously will be copied over into our bylaws when it comes to um pa- power and duties and responsibilities. However, some of the areas that weren't in our municipal code but will be in the resolution and bylaws are uh relating to eligibility requirements, and that's for the Board of Library Trustees and Fire Commission. It was silent in our municipal code related to that. So you must reside in city limits and that'll be in the bylaws. Um, silent on voluntary resignation for each board up for discussion for this evening. And that um would be two consecutive unexcused absences, which would constitute a voluntary resignation. And silent on term limits approved in two thousand and fourteen, each, it just was never incorporated into the municipal code. Um, but this is for every single board and it's already been approved in two thousand and fourteen. We're not making any changes to this. Um, but for Fi- Fire Commission and the Board of Library Trustees, it's a two, a maximum of two consecutive, consecutive four-year terms. And for the DRB, it is consecutive three-year terms. The recommended action for this evening is a lot. So there's six action items. I will bring this back up. Um, right at the time we're going to be, if, if it's going to be approved. And the recommended action for this evening is to introduce the ordinance relating to the Board of Library Trustees by title only and waive further reading of the ordinance. Adopt the resolution amending the Board of Library Trustees bylaws. Introduce the ordinance relating to the Designer Review Board by title only and waive further reading of the ordinance. Adopt the resolution amending the Designer Review Board bylaws. Introduce the ordinance relating to the Fire Commission by title only and waive further reading of the ordinance and adopt the resolution amending the Fire Commission bylaws. And once again, my shameless plug, if you're interested in serving, you can subscribe to be notified of any vacancies on our boards and commissions at www dot city of San Rafael dot org slash boards dash commissions. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. That was like speed, speed reading. And, and thank you. I, I, I am so appreciative that we're taking this moment. Our boards and commissions have evolved, I'd say organically, another way to say a little messily over the years. And to really have things delineated is both uh protects the city as well as clarifies for our volunteers what's expected of them. So uh, thank you, Madam City Clerk, for taking this on. It's a lot like kind of cleaning up your junk drawer in a way. So um, with that, I will ask for questions before public comment. Vice Mayor Kurtz.
Just one question in terms of communication to the different um boards and committees.
Yeah.
Uh, did you have a chance to review all these with everybody?
So we didn't bring it to the boards and commissions directly. However, we did send notifications to, well, we did it in preparation for the meeting on the sixth, which this was continued from that. But we sent out emails about three weeks in advance, letting everyone know of the changes that would be taking place on both oversight committees and these three boards. And then there have been meetings that have been held, I believe, last week with the Board of Library Trustees, held, held a meeting about um, the changes that are being recommended. And aside from that, it's just been staff reports sending out.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I should also say, just in addition to that, with the communication that's gone out outside from the boards and commissions as we've, you know, um, we've been posting it to our website, we sent it out on a mass, our mass email notification snapshot and um the I J. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill, questions?
Yes, uh, thank you, Lindsay, for the report. Um, just when I recall joining um the Fire Commission, I remember being asked if I lived in city limits. Were we just enforcing it, but it wasn't actually written in the code?
Yeah, great. It, that's true. So we have been um for years, traditionally, my predecessor, I'm sure her predecessor, you had to be um San Rafael resident. So while we've been practicing that, it's one of those things that we've done, I think, with a lot of our boards and commissions. It's been a standard practice that's written nowhere. Um, so now we're just kind of uh making sure that that's written in our documents.
Thank you. My, my next question is um, with the consistency that, you know, should we move forward with this? How, can we estimate how much efficiency that will result in staff being freed up to do other things? Or is, is it material or is it insignificant?
I think really the staff, it, the issues will come up more when each board is operating differently. So that's usually when we come across the most issues. I would say that over the years, I've had to attend multiple boards and commissions meeting because there are issues with how alternates might be running, what the expectation is of our boards and commission members. So um, n- not always is there an issue just day to day. A lot of that is kind of, we just do. But when there are problems, there's no written guidelines anywhere for how they're handled. And they might be written somewhere for DRB, but the problem's arising in Fire Commission. And so not having that consistency and me just saying, well, the DRB does it this way, does that mean the Fire Commission should do it that way? So there's really no good, um, we usually just try to be as consistent as possible, but um the issue really comes up when there's bigger problems on each individual board.
Thank you. I have one more question, which is um, I recall in the, in the June, when we addressed boards and commissions, there were a series of reductions, say from seven to five. Are there any this time or is it, there's not this time?
Yeah, and I think that's really where the efficiencies came in the most. It's like making sure that the meetings are running smoothly with uh, the, the number of five members. Um, and then everything else is just more streamlining.
Great.
But no changes like that are being, are being proposed this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bushy, questions?
Uh, no excellent work. Um, I'll be delighted to um vote for it when you read all six of those.
I just want to say thank you to my deputy city clerk Brenner Nermi because she will be reading them all.
Councilmember Yorn Scalotti.
No, yes, uh, I think it's wonderful to have guidelines, uh, you know, that it makes all the boards and commissions standard. So great work. This is amazing. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll open it up to the public for a public comment on this item. Anyone in the chambers would like to address the council? Come on down. Nope, not seeing anyone. Is there anyone online? And to be clear, we had received a few emails over the last couple of weeks and those were read by the council, um, as well as the city clerk.
To comment on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature. If commenting by phone, please press star nine. There are no hands raised at this time. It'll just give it a few seconds. And I see no public comment.
Thank you. I will close the public comment. No questions raised. Um, we did have some questions or comments. Actually, if you could just, uh, uh, we'll just do comments from the dais. I know you got some comments in the end, but I want to make sure that everyone, no, it was just right now, everyone. There any comments you want to make on this item? No? Could you ask questions? No? No comments other than great work? Okay. We are great. So I think I'm just delaying what's going to happen next. Um, okay, so I'm asking the city clerk to read the title of the ordinance. I mean, first we have the request of motion. So on this, it's one sentence worth, so no one get too excited. Micah, you want to read it?
Um, just to introduce the ordinance. So um, I move to introduce the ordinance by title only and waive further reading of the ordinance. Is that right?
Yes.
Now I need a second.
Second?
Wait, hold on. Yeah, I have moved and seconded and now, uh, we've never really done this before. So now I'll have the deputy um city clerk read the ordinance.
An ordinance of the city of San Rafael, amending sections two point sixteen point zero three zero through two point sixteen zero three three of the San Rafael Municipal Code related to the Board of Library Trustees.
Thank you. Uh, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yorn Scalotti.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries five zero. This is why these ordinances are so important because it requires all this kind of um t- tension to detail. Okay, uh, next motion, please.
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
I move that we adopt a resolution amending the Board of Library Trustee bylaws.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yorn Scalotti.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries five zero. Rachel, you're up.
Hey.
Thanks. Introduce an ordinance of the city of San Rafael, amending section. No, wait, no, wait, no, you read this. You read this.
We can just read it.
Don't just read this one right here.
We could make it easier, Brenna, and just read it.
Okay.
Introduce the ordinance by title only and waive further reading of the ordinance.
Second.
Moved and seconded. I'll have the city clerk read the title.
An ordinance of the city of San Rafael, amending section fourteen point twenty five point zero seven zero and adding sections two point sixteen, one two zero through two point sixteen, one two two of the San Rafael Municipal Code related to the Design Review Board.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yorn Scalotti.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries five zero. Mary Beth?
I move that we adopt the resolution amending the Design Review Board bylaws.
And I'll second. Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yorn Scalotti.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries five zero. Still going. Uh, who's next? Micah, go ahead.
Okay, I moved to introduce the ordinance by title only and waive further reading of the ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. City clerk, uh, deputy city clerk, read the ordinance.
An ordinance of the city of San Rafael, amending sections two point sixteen point zero one zero through two point sixteen zero one three of the San Rafael Municipal Code related to the Fire Commission.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yorn Scalotti.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries five zero. One last one. Who's going to bring us home?
You can do it.
All right. Um, adopt a resolution amending the Fire Commission bylaws.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yorn Scalotti.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries five zero. That is what cleaning up municipal code looks like. So thank you all. Uh, there is nothing on our San Rafael successor agency, so this meeting is adjourned. Good night, everyone. Good night, everyone.